Good afternoon. Calling to order, the City Council meeting of August 29th at 4:05 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadriyan.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian. Najarian. And Mayor Brotman.
Here. And may we have your report?
Close session one, close session one A. Conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Saderi versus City of Glendale, LASC, case number 20STCV34372. B would be conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Edgarian versus the City of Glendale at all, LASC case number 21STCV07056. And IMC has been moved to further date.
Thank you. Do we anticipate reporting out on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, we anticipate reporting out on item 1A.
1A, okay. No public comments, I assume?
No comments, no calls.
So we will...
No calls.
We will recess to closed session. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the August 29th meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 6:04 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Asadriyan, Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian. Mayor Brotman.
Here. Now, would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation.
I will read a modified excerpt from an invocation by Hila Ratzabi. This land we dwell upon today is the ancestral land of the Gabriolino Tongwa people. We acknowledge their historical roots in this place and the many generations who were stewards of this land. The earth was here before us and will endure after we are gone. Let us walk gently upon this precious planet, taking only what we need, leaving little waste, nurturing the soil, revitalizing the land to sustain future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, may we have your report, please?
Yes. The agenda for the August 29, 2023, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on August 24, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is our next item?
Next, our presentations and appointments. The first one is regarding the agenda. The regular meeting for the City Council on September 5, 2023, have been canceled. The next regular meeting will be held on September 12, 2023.
Okay. And before you read out the next item, is Talia Hofseppian here in the audience? She's there? Okay. I know Councilmember Asatrian wanted to address you, so can we just move the order on the chance that she will show up? Oh, there she is. Well, in that case, let's just go on then. She is here, so let's go on with that.
Commendation for Talia Hofseppian, California Bears Youth Hockey Club.
Thank you. And I am going to turn this over to the just-in-time Councilmember Asatrian to read the commendation and maybe as she does this, could Talia and her family come up to the
Before I read the commendation, I just want to give everyone a little bit of a background. I have the honor of introducing and recognizing a young trailblazer in Glendale. Talia Hofseppian is 11 years old, who is here with her parents, Ani and Shahnur. She plays left wing with California Bears Youth Hockey Club and coached by former National Hockey League player Alexandra Frolov. Talia is the only female player on the boys' travel team and has participated in tournaments throughout the United States. She has a very long resume, but I do want to note that in July 2023, she was... Two of her achievements included number one in tournament goals scored, 14 and 18 points. And she was named Player of the Game Award. And then in the regular season, she helped the team play second in California. If we can give her a round of applause. And the commendation, it's the mayor's commendation, and it reads, "Presented to Talia Hofseppian in recognition of your exceptional accomplishments and unwavering dedication. As the sole female hockey player on a boys' team, your commitment to the sport, your teammates, and your community serves as an inspiring example of perseverance, resilience, and breaking down barriers. On behalf of the City of Glendale, we wish you continued success." And it's signed, Mayor Dan Brotman.
All right. Congratulations. Congratulations. You want to go down and do a picture? We'll do a photo op first. Are we all doing it? Yeah, you want to? Might as well.
So nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, yeah?
Yes. Nice job. Yeah, I was a coach once, so I understand how you didn't face any of the abuse or discrimination. Your boys were good to you? All right. Because I know back in the day you did it. Hi. Nice to meet you.
Okay, we're gonna, maybe we'll just stand in the back. You want to go over there? Sure. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You want to say anything? We might want to ask you a question.
Yes. We do have a question.
Talia, what is your favorite team for professional hockey?
The L.A. Kings.
All right. That was the right answer. Good job. We asked you to stay there for a minute because we have a former PE...
Coach.
Coach and teacher here who may have a question.
Well, I just, well, I did. But, you know, back in the day when I was coaching and girls' athletic director, et cetera, we had one girl that was on the soccer team, the boys' soccer team. And she had a real problem with harassment and kind of abuse that we had to deal with. And so I was asking Talia if she experienced any of that, and she said...
No.
No. And that speaks volumes for today's sports, athletics, and boys and girls playing together. And so, congratulations. You are paving the way for others, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Well, on that fun note, what is next?
Next is the identification of nominating panel for Building and Fire Board of Appeals Commission, Kasakian and Devine.
Thank you. There's no action. Right? No.
And next is the appointment of Ara Hatamiyan to the Civil Service Commission by Brotman and Devine, 8/22/23.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Hatamiyan, if you could come forward. And if you would like to bring your lovely family, they can join you. We had the pleasure of hosting them here, and they sat right in this chair and held a mock council meeting.
I do want to thank Talia for going before me. You broke the ice. Get it, hockey? Broke the ice. That's a bad dad joke.
Okay. So we'll first take a motion and a second and a vote. Do we have...
Sure. I'll move Ara Hatamiyan for Civil Service Commissioner.
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Asatrian. Very good. So let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadriyan.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Brotman.
Yes. Rats? Congratulations. So, as you know, but the audience may not know, you were chosen through initially... Well, you were chosen here by the vote that just took place, but you were nominated to this council by Councilmember Devine and myself through a panel process, which we have just started. So we had a panel of two. We interviewed a number of candidates, a number of very strong candidates, but you clearly stood out, I would say, with your experience at work and also the fact that you have done this before and, I believe, had to step down from the commission because of family, new child, who's now with which one?
Two of them.
Oh, two of them? Okay. But now you're back with us, and we're very, very excited to have you here. So congratulations, and if there's something you would like to say, please...
Thank you, Mr. Brotman. Thank you, Glendale City Council, for giving me this pleasure to serve the city once again. It is a true honor to be a commissioner. I brought my family along just as an example of, you know, what Glendale produces. They are a product of Glendale Unified School District. My youngest one attends Mark Keppel. My oldest one is at Tole, and my middle one is still at Mark Keppel also. As a matter of fact, my oldest one was the treasurer for Mark Keppel, and I just found out that we also have additional Tole students here also. So that's why I brought my family along, just as a representation of Glendale. So I do want to thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your willing to serve again. Oh, before you go, Mr. Hatamiyan, could you just spend one or two minutes telling us about your background?
Oh, absolutely.
So we all know...
Yes.
...who you are. We talked about it a little bit last week when we nominated you, but...
Absolutely. It'd be my pleasure. So I work for L.A. County. I started in L.A. County at the DA's office when I was attending law school. I worked in their prelim unit. After that point on, I went into the disciplinary section of the Sheriff's Department, where I worked for 14 years, administrating law enforcement discipline. And now I'm with the Department of Mental Health. I am their manager over their Health and Safety and Employee Relations Unit. And right now, we are facing many different challenges at the Department of Mental Health, mainly being homelessness, the homelessness crisis. And so we are actively involved with that. And obviously, prior to that, I was on the commission, on the Civil Service Commission. Outside of the commission and working for L.A. County, I was also a teacher. I've been teaching as an adjunct faculty for colleges in this area. I've published a book on employment law. So I have a little bit of background on employment law and the government sector. My beautiful wife, she also works in the government sector. She works for county councils. She's an attorney for their dependency unit that deals with the foster care system of children. So we pride ourselves on serving the community and especially the, you know, the Jewel City as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. We're very, very happy to have you and, you know, free talent. It's pretty incredible. We'll talk about that later. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to come back and serve. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Okay. And what is next?
Next, our consent items, including minutes. Following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments.
And do any my colleagues...
I'll move the consent calendar.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadriyan.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Brotman.
Yes. Very good. Moving right along. What is next?
Next, our City Council and staff comments.
Sure.
Councilmember Devine?
Thank you. Thank you very much. As most of you know, we are currently working, the Airport Authority, of which I am a member along with Councilmember Najarian, currently working on the replacement passenger terminal project. And Holder-Pankow Tech, it's a joint venture, will be holding a subcontractor community information session. They are looking for local community businesses to take part in the building, the construction of the new airport. They are holding this information session on September 12 at the Courtyard by Marriott by the airport in Burbank from 10:00 a.m. until noon. They will be hosting this regarding construction opportunities for this replacement terminal. They are seriously looking for local women's businesses, minorities, and local businesses, contractors, and DBEs. We are going to be posting the invitation, the information on our website. They're going to provide critical information for project participation. They will have schedule and trade package information, in-person connection with JVT members, and in-person connection with possible trade partners. They are also, and this is interesting, they're also going to be working with our high schools for apprenticeships and workforce opportunities. If you're interested in this session, if you are a contractor, a businesswoman, a minority who is interested in working on this airport project, again, it will be on September 12 at Courtyard by Marriott at 2100 Empire Drive in Burbank from 10:00 a.m. until noon. It's a terrific opportunity, so I hope many of you will try to get information on this and be there. There is a website, and the website is HPT, standing for Holder-Pankow Tech, JVteam.com. So if you're interested. Otherwise, you can check our website. I would also like to take this opportunity, as you know, council has been working on outreach for quite a while regarding districting. And a couple of us advise us to wait until the Santa Monica case against districting was resolved. Well, Santa Monica was successful in their case, so my question now is, should we keep moving and rushing forward, or should we pause? The decision by the courts bodes well for Glendale not being forced into districting and an elected mayor. Again, I ask, should we pause on this action? This is a rhetorical question, and I'm only telling this so that our residents know the outcome of that case. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And when we're finished with council comments, I will ask the city attorney to say a word as, depending on what you read, I've read that Santa Monica lost, I've read that Santa Monica won, and I've read things in between, so I'm not sure we know yet. But let me turn to my colleagues. Any... Councilmember Asatrian?
I actually have a couple of things. One is I noticed that we have a counseling your neighborhood coming up. I think one of the recommendations I had made to staff after the last one was for us to do outreach, whether it's flyers in that neighborhood or using data that we have to reach our residents within that neighborhood, to get folks to actually come to these counseling your neighborhoods. I think the one that we had in the rancher was very successful. The one that we had in, at the Pacific Park, not so much. And so I think it would be important if we are doing these for the community to be made aware and that it's not just an agenda item that's placed. On Sunday, Mayor Brotman and I attended the grand reopening of the Montrose Bowl. They have done a fantastic job at keeping the 1940s theme and lanes. Got to throw some bowling balls down that lane. And they've incorporated an all-vegan and all-kosher kitchen. I have to say, they're, you know, I was skeptical, as I always am, about something being called chicken, but it's not. It was possibly the best hot chicken sandwich I've had. I know that they're going to be doing a community event as part of their opening, and so I look forward to sharing that or have staff share that when we get it. This last week, I also had scheduled a meeting with our staff and L.A. County's Economic Development Department and Procurement Office for us to take a look at how we can move forward with the locally-owned minority and woman-owned tasks that we have as part of the work plan. One of the things that we learned through that process is that L.A. County is currently going through a revamp of their own procurement process and kind of building out different methods of communication and databases and so forth. One of the things I did mention was the opportunity for us to obtain the information that they have and for that data sharing to be something that's automatic and it's not something that we're requesting through our different departments. I know that they're putting together a task force. For some reason, Glendale's not part of that, so one of my requests was also to invite Glendale to the table and for us to have input in that process that they have. And then lastly, last week, we, you know, recognized Women's Equality Day and talked about programming, and this morning I saw that we are having a webinar tomorrow. And recognition of Women's Equality Day, you can join this webinar to learn how a woman-owned minority-owned business certification can help you gain government, utility, and private sector contracts. You can register at bit.ly/pacewebinar. All this information is available at ChooseGlendale. And the webinar is going to take place tomorrow, August 30, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So I encourage all of our small business owners who own, you know, local minority or woman-owned to join in. I think that very well ties in with the opportunities that Councilmember Devine was talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kasakian?
I don't have anything, but I don't know. I'm looking for the, an article that would affirm what my colleague, Councilmember Devine, derived from the court case, and I'm having trouble finding it, including Santa Monica's own city website, which says, "City Statement on California Supreme Court Opinion on CBRA Case," says, "The city is reviewing the Supreme Court's opinion and working to assess the path forward." And there's a number of others as well that... Here's another headline that says... Well, I'll tell you, none of them say what I think Councilmember Devine so strongly feels is said. So I would also like to understand whether this somehow puts Glendale in the clear or is a sweeping decision that is, that some are trying to make the public believe it is. Other than that, I honestly don't have any other comments.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yeah?
I just want to make sure we clarify on, I know we passed the consent, but just on the agenda itself, it said Martuni in Armenia, and it needed to be Martuni in Artsakh. Just want to make sure that in the docs, it's all corrected.
The resolution was corrected to flat Artsakh.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So a couple of things. Last Wednesday, Councilmember Kasakian and I attended a press conference in front of the Azeri consulate in Los Angeles. It was put on by the Pan-Armenian Council of the Western United States, and the intention was to speak on the humanitarian crisis that's unfolding in Artsakh with the blockade now going on for over seven months, preventing food, medicine, and other urgently-needed supplies from entering the country. There were a number of prominent people who spoke, including our Congressman Adam Schiff, Congressman Brad Sherman, L.A. City Council President Paul Krikorian was there, along with at least two of his colleagues from the L.A. City Council, and a number of other individuals, members of the clergy. And Councilmember Kasakian and I both spoke. He spoke a lot more eloquently than me, as is usually the case. But we did both speak. And, you know, I, and many others, talked about the fact that there are 120,000 innocent people now trapped without access to the basic needs of human beings. And that includes 30,000 children, 20,000 elderly, and almost 10,000 disabled people on the verge of starvation. And at this press conference, we all jointly and individually called on the U.S. government to take immediate and aggressive steps to address this issue, including, and I'll just name some of the things that were discussed. One, introduce a U.N. Security Council resolution which would require Azerbaijan to adhere to a February 2023 order by the International Court of Justice to open the Locking Corridor, which is how materials can enter the Republic of Artsakh. Halt all U.S. military assistance to Azerbaijan. It is quite shocking that the United States still is providing military assistance to Azerbaijan. Impose sanctions on members of the Aliyev regime under the Magnitsky Act for war crimes, crimes against humanity. Deliver humanitarian assistance to Artsakh through the corridor at the scale needed to address the humanitarian catastrophe. And last but not least, introduce a U.N. Security Council resolution establishing a peacekeeping mission in Artsakh to protect the safety of the population there over time. One thing that was mentioned, which doesn't necessarily do anything to resolve the situation, but it does bring attention to it. The LA City Council named the intersection in front of the Azeri consulate, which is Wilshire and Granville Avenue, Republic of Artsakh Square. So signs will be going up, maybe they've already gone up, at that location, right in front of the Azerbaijan consulate. And for what it's worth, I think that's something that does, does send a strong symbolic message. So I just wanted to share that, that we were there and that we support these, these actions that we're calling on the Biden administration, the U.S. State Department to undertake. Okay, so that was one. Changing subjects entirely, I attended the first edible food recovery stakeholder meeting. As many of you may know, under Senate Bill 1383, in addition to sorting organic waste, there are requirements involving recovery of edible food that would otherwise get thrown away. So this was a, one of, I think, several meetings that will be taking place. This one for organizations that are collecting edible food from the generators of edible food to distribute either directly to people in need or to other food banks. And they got together, they discussed the challenges that they have. It is actually very complex. And, and the idea was to identify resources, share, share experiences, and start the conversation. Future meetings will include some of the large producers of edible food that would otherwise go to waste, like supermarkets and restaurants, hotels, conference facilities, that kind of thing. So there were a number of people at this event. YWCA Salvation Army, Glendale College Catholic Charities, the Armenian Relief Society, Portos, Betty Porto was there. The City of Burbank was there, the First Baptist Church, and a number of others. It was, it was interesting, and I look forward to seeing us continue to make progress on this front. And the Montrose Bowl, my colleague already mentioned, we got to throw a few, what do you call it? Throw a few balls, I guess you call it. What's that? Yeah, bowling balls, but... And I probably got the gutter more often than I got anything else. But it was fun anyway. And, and I will say, I agree, this vegan food was really pretty, pretty incredible. And they also have a great collection of craft beers, some on tap. So if you, if you like that kind of thing... Are you rubbing your hands like you want to get over there to have some beer? Disinfect, okay. As soon as I said beer, I saw you going like that. But anyway, it's, they really did a nice job. So if you can get on over there. I think that was a soft opening, and I think they're probably open in the next couple of days.
They're going to send something to everyone for the coming...
They are, and then they're going to have an event, I think, at the end of the month. But I think they're actually going to be open, like you can go. And I think if you go and you order food, the bowling is free. It's really focused on the food, and the bowling is kind of to bring you there to eat the food, I guess. So bowling is free. Okay, so just the last thing. I, I know that we're now, we've now established these panels to select members of our boards and commissions. And one thing we haven't discussed, and I was hoping we could try to clarify, is our process for notifying the public that there's an opportunity on a border commission, soliciting applications, and then doing interviews. And so I would, I would suggest that we look at some kind of a system. For example, once we notice the public that this position is available, we have a 30-day period for people to put in applications. We wait the 30 days, we collect them, we interview the applicants, and we make our selection. And I would also ask us to consider making the, all the applications public. They are public record anyway, but it would be good for the public to understand who we've selected and who we haven't selected. The only exception, I would say, perhaps, is if we are extending or renominating, reappointing somebody, I should say, who is already an incumbent on a border commission for a second term. I think if we have somebody that we want to renominate, we probably don't need to go through this 30-day period. But anyway, I don't want to, I'm being fairly prescriptive about this, but I know this is something that we can discuss. And I'd like to put this on a future agenda to, just to clarify our process. Councilmember Kasakian?
I don't know. Did you mention Alex Film Society?
I did not.
Okay.
Okay. And I, I am finished. Do you want to mention that?
Yeah, I just want to mention, thank the Alex Film Society and the Glendale Historical Society. There was a showing of the classic film noir Mildred Pierce, which for those of you who may not know, is, it was a novel set in Glendale, made into a Hollywood movie, for which I believe it was Joan Crawford who won an Academy Award. I think her only Academy Award, I learned. And then it was recently remade as a film starring Kate Winslet. But it's all about a woman who rises from nothing to become a very successful businesswoman, all right from here in Glendale. In the original black-and-white film, there are scenes that were filmed here in Glendale. It was my first time seeing it. I thought it was great. And more importantly, I thought that lawn area using the city's LED screen was a great, great combination of organizations working together, having an outdoor movie night. Hopefully, they'll do more of those.
Mayor.
Kudos to them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Devine?
And if I want, if I may, I want to piggyback on what the mayor was saying about the commissions. And there is an opening on the Historic Preservation Commission. If anyone out there is interested, we didn't, we don't have any applications. And so I'd like to encourage anyone out there that like, is interested in historic preservation to please, please apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Staff comments? Would you, Mr. Garcia, would you care to comment?
If you'd like me to, yeah, I can't elaborate too much because we were analyzing the opinion. But as you noted, it has been noted, the California Supreme Court did issue its long-awaited ruling in the case of Pico Neighborhood Association versus City of Santa Monica regarding the scope of the California Voting Rights Act and whether or not vote dilution, which is a term of art, meaning a process that, where an election system dilutes the votes of a protected class or minority group. And so one of the questions in that case was whether or not that was a required element in a voter, California Voting Rights Act case. And then if so, what's the test? Well, how do you, how do you prove vote dilution? So the Supreme Court, you know, I hesitate to say there was a victor and loser because although it did reverse the decision, the Court of Appeal, it did remand it back to the Court of Appeal for further analysis. And essentially, what it said is you had to prove vote dilution in making such a claim, and that to show that vote dilution is established when under some lawful alternative election system, that minority group would have the potential on its own or with the help of crossover voters to elect its preferred candidate. And that this can be shown through evaluation of the facts and circumstances of the jurisdiction, including the local agency's circumstances, its election history, and the design and impact of the current system as well as an alternative system. So that's, that's a lot there. That's a mouthful. And a lot of lawyers are still looking at this and seeing what it means. We are going to look at it. Our team is going to look at it. And obviously, because it involves legal risk, the assessment of legal risk, it will be a discussion for, you know, a closed session. But we will provide that information to you. You'll have it before we get into the next round of public hearings on our districting process.
Okay. But would you say, just, just, I would like to simplify things. I know you can't simplify things like this. But it was not a victory, an outright victory for either party, for Santa Monica or for the Pico Union?
That's a fair assessment. Correct.
Okay. And it's, it's still then, the waters are still kind of murky as far as...
Yes.
What it takes to bring these types of cases, what it takes to defend against these types of cases.
Right, what it takes to prove that various elements of a voting rights case, especially vote dilution. And I'll note, you know, the plaintiffs won in the trial court. Santa Monica won in the Court of Appeal. And you're right, the Court of Appeal, although reversed the victory that Santa Monica, Santa Monica got in the, in the Court of Appeal decision, it remanded it for further analysis. So there's no, there's no conclusion to that case. They're still either going to have to litigate that or decide to settle.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff comments?
Mayor Brotman, if I may?
Yes, please.
The city clerk's social media webpage does advertise on the openings of boards and commissions. In fact, we've created posts in five different languages to, to be accessible to the public. So we have that information. Also, the boards and commissions webpage has a listing of all the openings and how to apply for each commission.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no other comments, what is our next agenda item?
Our next item is community event announcements. Three minutes each. We have one speaker card.
Okay. Is it Aida or Ida Anbarian? Ida. Ida Anbarian, yes. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here to discuss... My name's Ida Anbarian. I'm from the Armenian Bar Association's pro bono clinic. I'm an attorney there. And on September 9th, we will be holding an expungement clinic. I wanted to let everyone know and give some information about how we can help the Glendale community and any members of the nearby cities, community members. We will be basically anyone who has a record that would like to have it expunged, have it, would like to have it cleared in order to start their life over again. A lot of times, records that can prevent people from seeking employment or even apartment buildings, you know, if they want to get, rent an apartment or rent a home or get a home, those can be prevented. So what we're doing is we're providing free expungement clinics for members. And it's going to be on Saturday, September 9th. It will be held at Maple Park Community Center, which is at 820 Maple, East Maple Drive. And we will have our expungement clinic attorneys there helping people apply for those expungements and reduction of felonies and probation records.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, what is next?
Next are action items. Action item A, Public Works Regarding San Fernando Road Beautification Project Alternatives. One, motion accepting staff's recommendation to proceed with the design and implementation of alternative two A for the San Fernando Road Beautification Project.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of City Council. This council's direction a few months ago to improve and beautify San Fernando Road corridor along the MTA railroad tracks. And in response to that direction, staff applied for and was successful in obtaining $5 million in grant monies from the state of California to, to help in that endeavor. This project includes a number of improvements, including not only enhanced landscaping, but also sidewalks, crosswalks, as well as bicycle facilities. Staff and our consultant have conducted a feasibility analysis and took the recommendation to Transportation and Parking Commission recently. And that commission provided a recommendation to City Council as one of the alternatives that was in the staff report. With that alternative to, Mr. Imran, our Director of Public Works, to introduce our consultant, who present this item for your consideration.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. As was mentioned, this is a long-awaited project for us to, to help improve the condition of San Fernando Road. And as such, we've engaged the services of Mark Thomas, who's a consultant, to do this study for us and analyze all the different alternatives. And we have Mr. Pat Somerville of Mark Thomas, who's going to go through a short presentation.
Thank you, yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Pat Somerville, project manager for the Mark Thomas team. A little bit about the, about the project introduction. First and foremost, this project is intended to beautify and improve the public areas along San Fernando Road through the implementation of new raised landscape median islands, parkway, and parkway planting to help mitigate the urban heat island effect. It will also include multimodal improvements for all users, including new and improved bus stops with shelters where they don't exist today, and high-visibility crosswalks to improve safety. The project is funded through three different sources. Measure W from the county, state gas tax funds, and the grant that was mentioned previously from Caltrans, the Clean California Grant, nearly $5 million. The important item to understand regarding that grant is it has a deadline to have the project constructed by June, end of June 2024. So that deadline plays into the decisions being made in terms of being able to have this project built and the grant funds expended by that date. So a little bit about the existing conditions along San Fernando Road. This is a major arterial highway, four lanes in each direction, along a commercial corridor with businesses and on-street parking on the east side and the MetroLink rail corridor on the west side. So this constrains our corridor. We're looking at a 62-foot width, curb-to-curb, to fit the elements out there today. And any additional elements we want to add is competing for that real estate within the street. So this is the constrained canvas that we have to work with as we develop the project. We're also looking at the facilities that exist out there today that were either planned or implemented, starting with the 2012 Bicycle Master Plan. This did include a Class 1 facility along San Fernando Road located inside the railroad right-of-way. Unfortunately, this metro-owned corridor with MetroLink and the future high-speed rail, that is no longer an option to locate this inside the railroad right-of-way. There was also, as part of that plan, a number of east-west connections to San Fernando Road from Glendale. Since then, there has been improvements implemented through the corridor, primarily the Glendale Narrows River Walk north of the 134 along Fairmont, where the Phase 1 and Phase 2 pathway in Confluence Park has been completed. Phase 3 is the bridge that would extend from Flower Street over to the LA side at Zoo Drive. And that is currently in the design phase. That project has been funded through another grant, I believe, the Prop 68 grant for that. So that item is moving forward. Additionally, LA Metro has funding and is currently planning and designing additional active transportation improvements in this vicinity that include a new bridge that would span... span over San Fernando Road and the MetroLink corridor at Doran Street. Once that crossing is closed, this would be the measure to be able to get pedestrians and cyclists over San Fernando Road and the rail corridor from Doran Street. That path would extend down to the end of the Doran Street at the cul-de-sac, then continue north with a new bridge that would span over the Verdugo Wash and connect to your Glendale Narrows River Walk project. So that would provide continuity to the north and south of the 134 and the Verdugo Wash. And it also opens up the opportunity for future expansion of the bike path along the east bank of the LA River. It's a corridor that would run parallel to San Fernando Road. As we started the project, with the understanding of the importance of community engagement, the team implemented a robust outreach program that included e-blasts, door hangers, postcards, social media. All notifications were in three languages for the community. We also initiated the initial survey. And this survey is a fact-finding survey, finding out what the community's challenges are through the corridor, but also what their desired improvements are through the corridor. The top four challenges are all traffic operations-related. Not surprisingly, the top desired improvements were also roadway and traffic-related, followed by corridor beautification and pedestrian improvements. So from this feedback, the team developed three alternatives that were brought forward. And all of the alternatives have common features involved through each of them. This includes parkway planting, both along the rail corridor to help beautify that side of the street, as well as the east side along the businesses, pavement resurfacing throughout from Elk Avenue up to Grandview, upgraded bus stops, making them ADA compliant, and installing bus shelters where they don't exist today, creative crosswalks to improve visibility and safety, curb extensions at almost every intersection to help shorten the path of travel for the pedestrians crossing the street, and the raised landscaped medians that will be included. Regarding the medians, there are 11 medians planned throughout the corridor. It is not a continuous median from end to end along the corridor, in part because we're maintaining left turn at the cross streets where it exists today, as well as the higher volume driveways for the businesses along the corridor. So Alternative 1 is effectively the existing condition with the addition of the planting and the raised median islands. This would function as a Class 3 bikeway through the corridor with no change in the roadway lane configuration. It maintains all the, maintains all of the on-street parking. Alternative 2 implements striped Class 2 bike lanes along San Fernando Road. And in order to fit the two bike lanes, one in each direction, this alternative would remove the on-street parking, which is a loss of approximately 141 parking spaces from Elk up to Grandview. Because of the constraints of the roadway, there is no buffer or protection for this bike lane. It would be just purely a Class 2 striped bike lane. Alternative 3 is what's referred to as a Class 4 protected bikeway. This is one lane in each direction with a buffer and a vertical element separating the bikes from the vehicles. In order to accommodate this and the width that that Class 4 needs, this would remove one lane of traffic in each direction on San Fernando Road. It also reduces parking by about 30% because of the roadway configuration and the ability to restripe for parking. There is a VMT reduction along the corridor, however, because of the reduction in the lanes, it does nearly double the travel time in the afternoon peak hours, both northbound and southbound. And it also, as we heard from the Glendale Fire Department, because it narrows the roadway, it makes it more difficult and challenging for the fire apparatus to be able to navigate around a raised median and parked cars or the vertical elements within the bike lane as they are going to a call. We also looked at the traffic safety through the corridor. We collected all the collision data from 2012 to 2022 through the corridor, again, from Elk Avenue up to Grandview Avenue. There were 18 incidents on file, eight of which were involved pedestrians, 10 of which involved bicycles. So we're aware of those incidents, their locations. There was two locations in particular that had a cluster of accidents, one in California, the other Colorado. Also, with the implementation of the project and the features through the Caltrans Local Roadway Safety Manual, they document that installing raised medians can reduce collisions by up to 25%, providing bike lanes can also reduce bicycle-related accidents by up to We also evaluated the parking along the corridor. There's currently 78 on-street parking stalls north of the 134 and 63 south of the 134. We did, we twice went out to look at the utilization during the day, from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The corridor is very highly utilized throughout. Additionally, we looked at each of the cross streets at about 250 feet back from San Fernando Road to see what the utilization is like on the side streets, to see in particular is if we remove parking on San Fernando Road, is there sufficient parking on-street on the side streets to accommodate that. Those side streets are also very highly utilized, so there is not sufficient on-street parking, replacement parking if it was removed on San Fernando Road. So we took the three options, along with the information gathered on the traffic and the parking. We held a community outreach meeting in March at the Glendale Fire Protection Bureau. We had 40 community members come through, able to walk them through each of the boards, the exhibits, and what is planned in each of the three alternatives, hear feedback, provide input as to concerns that they might have had. We also did an online survey, and this was referred to as survey number two, where we were getting input on the alternatives and concepts that were presented at the outreach meeting. We want to indicate that the, the participant profile, 38% identified as an active cyclist. There were 11% that either worked along San Fernando or owned a business along San Fernando Road. The result of this online survey, Alternative 3, the Class 4 cycle track, or, or, Class 4 bike lanes ranked the highest, 42%, followed by Alternative 2, and then Alternative 1. Subsequent to that, we did a door-to-door canvassing of the corridor, both businesses and adjacent residents. The common theme through the discussion with the businesses was the parking. They are heavily reliant on it, and in their eyes, that was a nonstarter to remove it. That resulted in the clear 93% approval of Alternative 1. With the residents, the key concern for them was any cut-through traffic, which would have been tied to Alternative 3. And so, again, we're seeing a very heavy approval rating for Alternative 1 by the residents, followed by Alternative 2. So with this information and the discussions with the community, feedback from both the online survey and the community meetings, the team went back and looked at variations. What else might we be able to do? And this is where Alternative 2A came about. And what this does, it addresses the businesses' concerns about parking because we're maintaining it along San Fernando Road. It may, it addresses the residential community's concerns because we've maintained the four lanes of traffic on the road. But what we, what we have been able to provide on this one is a single Class 2 southbound bike lane along the west side of San Fernando Road. And we've accomplished that by skinning up all of the lanes and the median island through here to 10-foot lanes, 9-foot median, 7-foot parking lane. That allows us to provide just enough space to put that Class 2 bike lane in. Now, you also notice that there is no protection or buffer for this bike lane. And question is, what's the challenges? Why can't we? Well, the challenge is the characteristics of the corridor, the need when we, to be able to provide a buffer, we have to narrow something else. That something else would be the, the median. We have raised median, but we also have striped medians that provides two-way left-turn access to driveways along San Fernando Road. So to accomplish a buffer adjacent to the bike lane, we would need to narrow the median, which means we shift traffic over three feet. To shift traffic, we need distance to transition and taper them over. We also need transitions in and out of, of the left-turn pockets. All told, it takes about 300 feet of length to make the transitions work on each end, plus the left-turn pocket. Add all this up, and unfortunately, through the corridor, the blocks are so short that out of roughly 17 blocks, there's only four that would actually have enough length to them that this, we could achieve any form of buffer. And within those four, three of them would also then prohibit left-turn access in and out of additional driveways that was not intended originally, which leaves one remaining opportunity to do that. And let me give you a little bit of a look of how that looks and what I'm referring to here. This is a block between Grange and Highland Avenue. This shows a, the Class 2 bike lane along the railroad corridor. At the intersections, we need a 9-foot median width for the left-turn pockets. It cannot be anything less than that. If you're heading southbound and you cross Highland Avenue, you would, you would start to transition over. That's the 100-foot transition. That's the minimum required by the city. At that point, the median island is now down to six feet, which then would prohibit the ability for left-turn movements because the car cannot move into a two-way left-turn lane in the, in the raised median. So that would effectively eliminate left-turn movements and then out of two driveways on this one block. And then you have to taper back out ahead of the 60-foot taper that goes into the left-turn pocket, and then the length of the left-turn pocket, which varies throughout the corridor depending on traffic volumes. So there's very limited ability to provide a buffer along this corridor. And lastly, Alternative 3A was a look at a Class 4 protected two-way cycle track. And what we did different on this one is we combined the two directions of, for the Class 4 bike lane along the west side adjacent to the rail corridor. We restored the parking on the, for on-street on the east side of San Fernando Road, as well as two northbound lanes. So this addresses the parking concern. This addresses the traffic concern for northbound. However, the southbound direction of travel still is only one lane, and it is a narrowed section. So we still would have a southbound impacted traffic during the PM peak hours, as well as the concerns from the Glendale Fire Department because of the narrowed street width. This option also would require traffic signal modifications because of the two-way cycle track at each of the crossings of the railroad. What this means is we now have to engage the California Public Utilities Commission, LA Metro, and MetroLink for the modifications in the process of this, which is, would not fit within the timeline for this project to deliver and build it by the end of June So based on the feedback, staff went to the TBC last week recommending Alternative 1, particularly because it did meet the grant and project goals. It also addressed the business and residents' concerns regarding parking and traffic. The configuration was consistent with the, the challenges and the constraints of the corridor and the characteristics of, of the street, but also understanding the potential for additional connectivity in the future for, for bicycles, not only with the metro active transportation improvements that are being designed right now by LA Metro that connect to the River Walk, but also through the city's own updating of your bike transportation plan that could explore the extension of that bike path along the east bank of the LA River to provide a high, higher-quality bicycle facility for all users that parallel San Fernando Road. So it's an option that would be out there. So at the meeting, Alternative 2 was recommended for the following reasons, in part because it also addressed the business and residents' concerns, but it also provided a bicycle improvement along the corridor by providing that southbound Class 2 bike lane. It is an alternative that can be realized without impacting the project budget and schedule, and hence the staff is recommending Alternative 2A for your consideration tonight. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have any quick questions or should, because I could call up the speakers unless you have just
Sure. I just have a quick question first.
On, when, when in notes on, in the presentation, you mentioned that with bike lanes, accidents are reduced by 35%. Is there a specific type of bike lane that constitutes that percentage of a reduction?
That would be for a striped Class 2 bike lane.
Of Class 2? Because the, the first ones, which are just sharrows along the road, I don't think would result.
Correct.
If anything, they give, I think bicyclists a false sense of security. And how many left, left turns would be affected by the implementation of 2A into businesses? Do you, did you mention that?
For, in, to put a buffer, be able to put a buffer adjacent?
Yeah.
So I believe it's a total of six driveways or five driveways in three different segments.
Five driveways in each segment.
Five driveways total?
Five. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
On page 13, you note that Alternative 2 would result in loss of 141 spaces, parking spaces, or approximately. Do you have that numbered for south of the freeway?
Yes, there's 63 total parking stalls south of the 134 freeway. And that's been, that count was conducted by Mark Thomas staff, as well as our consultant that did the parking analysis. So it's been confirmed.
Okay. Thank you so much. You have a question?
Councilmember Devine?
Yes. My question is about off-street parking, and we, I suppose we all got an email today, and I don't know if the, the lady is here that was, that sent us the information, but she mentioned that there are hundreds of parking spaces, including a garage and lots off-street in that area that could be used, and it wouldn't matter if we, you know, got rid of the 144 on-street parking, or the 41, I think it's 41 in the 2A. Can you comment on that? You said you, you looked at off-street parking and
We, we looked at the on-street parking demands, the public parking. The off-site, off-street parking was not considered as part of our analysis, particularly because it is privately owned and it's, it requires a little more investigation as to its needs. There's also businesses that may still, not from the time they were built, have off-site parking. But it's also, takes additional analysis to understand the onsite parking or off-site parking needs of each of the businesses and uses along the corridor to determine if it is meeting current zoning requirements or grandfathered zoning requirements. It's difficult to say whether or not it would still be adequate to absorb the parking if it was removed from San Fernando Road.
Councilmember Devine, I didn't see a copy of the email, but we do not own, we don't have a parking structure along San Fernando, a public parking structure.
Right. I don't think she mentioned that they were public. She said garages, and then she had buildings and lots and
Oh, yeah, privately owned.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll get a presentation. That's one of our, one of our speaker cards. She'll be giving a presentation. Yeah, I just have two questions. On, let's see, when you were on page 10, let me just go back to it. Was it page, I'm sorry, page 14. You mentioned that this alternative 3 would double You mentioned that this Alternative 3 would double the travel time. Can you put that in seconds, minutes, and what, from where to where?
So the travel time is from Elk Avenue on the south end to Grandview Avenue on the north end. In today's conditions, that's estimated in either direction to be a 10-minute travel time, both northbound and southbound.
During peak hours.
PM peak hour, because that's, that's the governing one. That's the higher, has the higher volume to it. With Alternative 3, with the Class IV protected bike lanes, reducing the lane of travel in each direction, the number increases to 18 minutes, and I believe the southbound direction, 20 minutes in the northbound direction. So it nearly doubled both directions in the PM peak hour by reducing and eliminating the one lane.
And then my other question is, let's see, page 20. I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure. So on page 20, I don't know if you want to pull it up for now, but anyway, the.
Here, I'll back up for you.
Yeah, just that the rightmost travel lane there, 11 feet, I assume that's because of the parked cars, but is that, is that a requirement when we have a travel lane against parked cars? Our minimum is 11 feet?
The typical minimum lane is 11, and the typical parking lane is also eight. So we've reduced the parking lane to seven. Because of the, having the travel lane adjacent to the parking lane, having 18 feet total was preferable, whether it was a 10-foot lane and an eight-foot parking lane, or vice versa, but having the 18 feet was preferable to have a little bit of separation between the two.
So, so if you cut a foot off of that, that would be a safety issue?
I would say it would be yes, in my opinion.
Because I'm just thinking, if you, how much, how much space would you need for, to buffer that bike lane? Would it be a foot, or would it be less than a foot?
The typical buffer for a bike lane is three feet.
Oh, three feet just for the buffer?
That's the typical buffer for a bike lane. It could be made less.
It could be anything, yeah.
But the preferred is three feet.
Okay. And the 10-foot travel lane is our, is our minimum?
Yes.
Did any jurisdictions go narrower than that?
On through lanes, not that I have seen. I know the city of LA has been tightening things up, but they've been using 10-foot throughs and nine-foot left turns.
Okay. All right, thanks. Oh, yeah, Councilmember Sotia.
Sidewalk with what's left, is that like sufficient for people with disabilities?
Absolutely. The corridor will be ADA compliant.
And not like in some places on like Central and Brand, right, where it almost feels like you have to go around things?
Councilmember Sotian, everywhere in the city, by law, we are required to comply with ADA requirements. So sometimes what you see on Brand Boulevard, and we're dealing with code enforcement, is outdoor dining spaces that have taken over, but even with that, if they have, they have a permit from the city, it meets the minimum requirement for accessibility.
Okay.
And if I could add, the parkway on that side is 10 feet wide. The intent of this is to remove the front four feet for planting, maintain the back five or six feet, depending on segment, but making it a continuous without meandering that back and forth.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. We'll call up our speakers. Do we have anyone on the phone?
No, we do not. Well, we just got one caller.
Okay. So we've got one, two, three, four, five, six here. Yeah, and give it, we can give five minutes, and then we'll, we'll stop taking phone calls if we get any more. Okay, so we'll start with Lyndon Alexander de Latore. And you have three minutes.
Okay. Do I start now?
Yes.
All right. Hello, I am here to voice my support for Alternatives 2, 3, and slash or 3A. I have a stake in the matter, as I have cycled through San Fernando Road many times, from Glen Oaks Boulevard to Chevy Chase, where I make a right and head to the LA River Bike Path at Atwater Village. For a time, this was the first part of my commute to get to downtown Los Angeles. As I became more familiar with the roads in Glendale, I stopped using San Fernando as often, mostly because due to the lack of bike lanes and angry speeding cars. The fact is that San Fernando Road is a dangerous road for all users. On top of a few, a handful of pedestrian injuries, there have been a handful of bicycle collisions within the last decade. I would also like to mention one notable incident in, on the San Fernando Road during the open, community open house event. On March 23rd of this year, two cars jumped on a curb and landed on a few tables of a restaurant at the intersection of San Fernando and Chevy Chase. Now, I understand that it's a little bit south beyond the current project, but that doesn't change the fact that it happened, you know? Think about, think about this. An alternative timeline or universe where the city council chose alternative run one and was implemented, and that crash, or worse crash, occurred within that scope of the project, it would not look good for the city of Glendale, to say the least. This is why we have projects to extend sidewalks, to add bike lanes, and sometimes bus lanes. It's to prevent incidents like this from occurring, and you have the power to prevent these such incidents. Please support Option 3, 3A, or at the very least, Option 2. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mike Borisov.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Borisov. Again, sorry, I just came from work at GUSD, so forgive me for the shorts. So I'm just here to say Alternative 2A is the best we can go with right now. I was at the meeting for the Transportation Parking Commission when this came up, and really, what this project is all about is compromise. When, obviously, I want three, but that's not the reality that we live in. I, we have the fire chief, or sorry, fire department staff come up and say that if we only had one single lane that was 10 feet or even 12 feet, that's not good enough in case of an emergency, because cars can't like go to the right or left side of the street, which makes sense. And so to come up with a compromise to allow a bike lane, southbound bike lane, and still have emergency vehicles go in event of emergency, we have two lanes that are now 10 feet. Additionally, now this project will follow the timeline and follow the costs with the Clean Air Grant program. I do want to mention that I'm a bit bummed that there was no room for a buffer for the bike lane. So in my understanding, a protected bike lane is about three to five feet, but a buffer can be whatever size you want, although I don't know if there's a legal minimum to enforce like the safetiness of a buffer versus a protected bike, like arrow, not lane, sorry, a protected bike buffer. Like there's a buffer and then there's a protected bike lane. Those are two different things, and you can see that in the picture even. So if you go back to Alternative 3A, you can see there's a green, right, there's red, sorry, there's the stripes, and then there's green poles. Those are plastic ballards. That's a protected bike lane. A buffer would just be a thicker stripe, I believe, on the lane. And so I was confused why we couldn't have like at least a foot. I understand that there's a minimum median requirement, especially for turning left, and the median will have dry wells or water collection facilities, so that might affect the actual buffer-ness, or how wide the median is, and the buffer-ness that you could add to the bike lane. But all in all, I support Alternative 2A, and I hope, you know, at least get one bike lane versus zero, which is what we're currently at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alan Durham.
Mayor Brotman, members of the council. I'm Alan Durham. I agree with Mike Borisov. I'm here to support the staff's recommendation to go with Alternative 2A. It's not a perfect world, unfortunately, compromise is needed. 2A manages to add at least one dedicated bike lane on a street that has none, in addition to maintaining on-street parking in all four traffic lanes. Unfortunately, adding two bank lanes would result in the loss of all the on-street parking, or the loss of one or two traffic lanes. This portion of San Fernando Road is under, I'm sorry, it's mostly older commercial buildings, which have no dedicated parking. They rely on the street parking. And any parking structures that are in this portion of San Fernando are private property. They're not public lots where you can pay to park. And I think having no street parking would hurt these businesses economically, and also force parking onto residential streets rather than San Fernando Road. Eliminating one or two traffic lanes to put two bike lanes in is extremely problematic. It's a heavily traffled thoroughfare, and it will at least double the travel times during the rush hour, and it's already really congested during those times. Traffic backs up, there are a bunch of railroad crossings where the signals last a very long time. And I think reducing it to three or two lanes will divert traffic from San Fernando onto nearby residential streets, will get that effect of people cutting through residential streets to avoid San Fernando Road. And even if the traffic goes up to Glen Oaks Boulevard, we're going to be losing two lanes on Glen Oaks in the future when the rapid transit, North Hollywood bus project is implemented. So Glen Oaks is going to be going from six lanes down to four. If San Fernando goes from four to three or two, it's just problematic for the neighborhoods, because I think traffic will go up into the residential neighborhoods. And the Glendale Fire Department has stated that this is going to be a threat to public safety due to delays in response time. So I don't think you can really ignore that. So please don't delay approving Alternative 2A. There's only 10 months to go to get this project rolling, complete it, in order not to lose the grant money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kirsten Blod, or Blade, I hope you can correct me.
Yes. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Kirsten Blod. I'm a resident of South Glendale. I did have a presentation. First, I just want to say I'm not sure why it matters that all of the parking south of the 134 is private, when it's 100% private businesses. There's no public schools, public parks, or residences. Can you go to the first slide, please? Thanks. Or the second slide? Thanks. So the staff report failed to look at the bigger picture of Glendale's bike network. San Fernando intersects with five bike lanes, one future bike lane, and the future Verdugo Wash, which is by far the most of any roadway in Glendale. Next slide. That many connections to bike lanes guarantees that San Fernando will be and is currently used by lots of cyclists. In the past 10 years, there were 28 cyclists hit on the portion of San Fernando within Glendale, and two of those crashes resulted in the highest injury severity level other than death. Next slide. Over one-third of the crashes occurred within the project study area. Next slide. My parking analysis shows that unlike the northern portion, there's very little need for curb parking south of the 134, which is also where a bike lane is most needed. Next slide. So in this first portion, there are 44 off-street parking spaces, and there's not a single curb parking space. Next slide. This section is going to be redeveloped with a project that includes a 385-space parking garage, 121 surface spaces, and an off-street loading zone. There's no retail or any need for customer parking, and there's only 14 curb spaces anyways. Next slide. Here we have 111 off-street parking spaces and 12 curb spaces over two blocks, and it's mostly a junk lot, if you couldn't tell. So here you can see that these two blocks, for years now, have just been used as junk truck storage. They're not customer parking. Next slide. Again, here's another block showing that this is just junk truck storage, not customer So here we have 135 off-street parking spaces and 10 curb spaces, 50% of which are limited to 30 minutes. So the, also, I wanted to point out, the restaurant on the corner has 11 spaces of their own and a 14-space parking lot next door. Next slide. So here in front of Moonlight Rollerway, we can see that this has been used for junk truck storage since at least 2015. Next slide. There's not a single curb parking space available on this final stretch of San Fernando, but there are 539 off-street parking spaces, which means this whole section is essentially just a giant parking lot. Next slide. So all in all, only 2% of the available parking within one block is on the curb, and that's not even counting the curb parking available on side streets. Next slide. My alternative proposal is north of 134, Alternative 2A, and south of 134, Alternative 2. Is that my time? Okay. Thank you.
You could, you could wrap it up.
Okay, this is my last slide.
If you need another 30 seconds, it's fine.
Thank you. So with this proposal, cyclists would be protected where it matters most, which is near the freeway interchanges, less than 2% parking loss, and all parking north of the 134, which is where the residences and retail uses are. I know they need parking up there, and I don't want to take that away from them, and it also, that portion accounts for over 60% of the curb parking in the total project area, despite being only a third of the length, and almost 100% of the retail parking.
Okay, thank you.
And this would also connect to the Verdugo Wash Highland Bike Lane, and nearly to the Rivadale Bike Lane, and I believe the bridge that the, that was talked about earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes.
If I may.
Oh, you want to ask a question?
Do you, you went really, really fast through your slides, because you have, I am interested actually seeing the rest of the info that we just went past.
Oh, to go back.
Do you have, do we only have an electronic version of it?
We got it, you should have it on your phone. She sent, she attached it to an email.
Okay, I haven't seen, okay, I'll pull it up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Cole Bazemore.
Good evening, council staff. Very excited about this project. As I said to the commission last week, I think this is a great opportunity to revitalize this corridor. I don't have much more to say beyond the previous speaker. I think Kirsten did a wonderful job of summarizing the arguments in favor of 2A, as well as Option 2, south of the 134. I think reducing a few spots of parking that's on this corridor south of the 134 is really not much when you consider the safety that comes with having that dedicated bike lane. So please consider that when you're thinking about this. Reducing, like the staff presented, you know, the reduction in 35% of, I believe it was 35% less bike accidents that might result of this would be, I think, a huge gain. So again, please, please, I support 2A for the portion north of 134 and to south. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Kate Unger.
You said five minutes, right? I have time to say, good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of city councils, staff. Three minutes. Awesome. I can talk fast. Hey, I have such envy of your presentations. Can we get presentations like that, the community? We would love to see those. I wanted to start off by saying I am a member of the community that's right there impacted by traffic on San Fernando Road. In fact, my house was just a little bit off, one of those slides that we saw earlier, mostly speaking to north of the 134 and at the 134, which is the bane of my existence right about there. Who else knows about this? Councilmember Kasakian also knows about this experience of driving on San Fernando at the 134. So I wanted to say, staff did a really good job of reaching out to the public. I really appreciated that. They not only made sure that people had visibility into what was happening, when I reached out to them, they were very responsive. I really appreciated that. The consultant also was really good at the open house and even beforehand. There were problems with the survey at first. I reached out to them to point out that it was requiring people to give an answer, one, two, and three, like minimum of three answers. So I'm not sure if those answers were taken away from the survey results that you saw at the beginning. You couldn't say, "I have no problem with this road the way it is." You couldn't say, "I don't want any of these solutions." So I let them know that, and they changed it. I really appreciated that. I did want to highlight the results of the door-to-door canvassing. Obviously, not many residents came out tonight, but you saw in the staff report that a large majority of people like things the way they are. They recognize that there could be a lot of impacts from reducing traffic lanes in particular. Also, the off-street, the parking, I think, more of an issue north of the 134. So I'm strongly opposed to any alternatives that eliminate a traffic lane. It's just a nightmare there already. I really want to support 2A. I want to ask a question. I know that staff doesn't need to answer me. I hope one of you will ask this question. What happens on southbound San Fernando at the 134, where there are two traffic lanes, excuse me, that go to the left? Two traffic lanes go through, I was just there, I can't see how you fit a bicycle lane there? Are they going to use sharrows right in that spot? And if not, how are they going to fit that bicycle lane without reducing two lanes of traffic, plus those two lanes that turn a left? It gets backed up really badly. Everybody wants to turn a left. It's almost impossible to go straight through there. You get backed up. Last thing, nobody's talking about the landscaping. I'll talk about it really fast, really fast about the landscaping. The last time I did landscaping, they let it die. Let's not do that this time. Let's keep it alive. The Rosemary's still alive, maybe keep it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, Eric Sinanya.
First of all, I'm excited about this project as well. I see some family, like, on the other side of Glendale, so I'm always on that road, and the traffic is horrible. I haven't come here while they've presented before, so I just was wondering if the, I don't know what it's called, in the middle, the thing that is full of trees, but...
The median.
The median, yeah. Is there, has that been talked about, like, if that can be made, like, thinner? Because I, it seems like, I don't know if that, I haven't been here, so, but that could be saving some space, or, because I know right now, there's nothing there at all, so it's kind of going to take up a lot of space. And then, I know you mentioned some cross streets as to, like, where it starts and ends, but is there a reason why, like, it doesn't go the whole way through San Fernando, like, from the beginning of South Glendale all the way to the end? I'd love to know about that. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and then also about the, I know he said there's this, like, one of the options had the southbound, southbound bike lane. Could there be an option with, like, both bounds but on that one side? Because I know some bike lanes are like that, where it's, like, both ways, but it's just, like, on one side of the street, and saves a lot more space.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. We'll try to answer some of those questions. Mike Mohill.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I was in the comfort of my home a little while ago, watching the council meeting. And this project came up. What caught my eye was, you did a survey, and X amount of people answered the survey. Probably, knowing history, maybe 100, maybe 2, but I doubt if 1,000 people or more answered your survey. How can you get 1,000 people to answer your survey when you require the public to go to the city website? Or for people to knock on doors? Can I make a suggestion? And it's free to the city. Your Glendale Community Newsletter goes out to thousands of Glendale residents and beyond. And it's free to the public. If you want to put an announcement for a survey, put it in your Glendale Community Newsletter. And people could answer that survey and send it into the city manager. Then you'll have a survey, how people feel. Now, the only people who are impacted is right now are probably the people who live in the median area. But, you know, I live over there by Shaw Canyon. You know, I feel sorry for the people, and they want bike lanes, that's fine, okay. But why don't you get an opinion from the rest of the city, not just for the people who live around the corridor? Now, my wife right now is very mad that I'm talking about this subject matter, by the way. She said, "What you should be talking about, Mike, is the traffic by the Adventist Hospital." That's where you should talk about slowing down traffic. But let's talk about surveys. Let's, let's do realistic surveys, not just a couple hundred people. Get a couple thousand residents. They will let you know, the people who live up in Montrose will let you know, the people who live up in Whiting Woods will let you know, Rossmoyn, Glen Oaks Canyon, South Glendale, Adams Hill will let you know, but not just the couple hundred people who live along San Fernando Road. Thank you. Like I said, my community newsletter, it's free to the public. Even the city can use it as an announcement by now.
We have one caller, Dennis Nguyen. Dennis, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hello, council. My name is Dennis Nguyen, and I'm a resident of Glendale and live a mile, within a mile from San Fernando Road. I travel that road often as a driver, but never as a cyclist, frankly, due to the danger of the proximity and the speed of the cars traveling on that road. I'm calling today to voice my support for Alternative 2A. While I believe that the best option is Alternative 3, and it's alternative, but with the concerns of the first responders, I can understand why it cannot be completed as currently designed. I believe that there are options that can create a protective bike lane in both directions, such as the enforcement of parking rules, reducing the number of abandoned cars, client cars from adjacent auto body shops, junk hauling trucks, crashed vehicles, et cetera. Maybe widen the median, put the bike lanes in the middle of that to protect cyclists or a road diet. I'm positive that the design team can come up with an alternative that promotes mobility, safety, and equality. The installation of a bike lane would create a bike network of bike lanes that would promote a community of wellness. Glendale's a great city, with a network of drivers being a dark cloud hovering over the heads of its citizens. We have a wonderful opportunity here to continue to separate ourselves from Los Angeles City with a prioritization, big word, on the citizens of the dual city. We're a society of people, and the implementation of 2A would be a step towards taking the roads back for pedestrians and cyclists, and reducing our dependency on cars. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all of our callers?
That's all.
Okay. Wonderful. Let's go around and see what we have.
Question? Okay, thank you. Let me ask, let's see, Mr. Somerville. Could we do the two different options, the 2A north of the 134 and the two, the two south of 134? I mean, that sounds maybe like a good idea.
Is it feasible? Yes. Is it impactful for the parking? Because there are 63 parking stalls on-street on San Fernando Road that's south of the 134 that would be eliminated by doing Alternative 2 south of the 134 freeway.
How many?
63.
63. Okay, and the other question is, the median is right now designed at nine feet, correct?
Correct.
Is it possible to make it narrower? So that, you know, we were, the mayor was asking about the buffer, or about, it would take three feet to put another bike path, I guess, or bike lane on the other side? Could you decrease the median and then give us a, give us parking and a bike path, bike lane, I'm sorry, bike lane on the east side?
The nine-foot is the absolute minimum width for the left-turn movements that are required at each of the intersections along San Fernando Road. It's also the minimum required if we stripe it as a two-way left-turn lane for access in and out of driveways along the corridor that's currently been designed into the project. So anything less than nine in all of the left-turn movements would go away. Or, again, it's, it's the matter of having to transition in and out as we go, and the length it takes to actually make those transitions work with very short spacing intersection to intersection to intersection. It's, it's, 14 out of the 17 blocks, you're unable to actually implement any form of buffer at three feet because of the length you need to make the transitions work.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Satrian, any questions?
Could you respond to Kate Unger's question about the ability to put bike lanes by the 134?
Yes, it is, she's not wrong. It is very tight underneath that freeway in order to provide the dual left that's required in the southbound. We have narrowed the lanes through there in order to fit the one southbound bike lane in there, an Alternative 2A.
Okay.
Just follow up on that one.
Yeah, of course.
So, so that, so you've worked out, so is there, is there a need for any special signal there for, because I can't picture it, I'm sorry, but, but a bike traversing, cars getting onto the freeway, how does the signaling work there?
The southbound, the Class 2 bike lane in the southbound direction is running along that westerly curb, so it's running right along the railroad corridor. So the bikes themselves are not in conflict with those making the left turn to go onto Doran Street to go to the freeway. They're running parallel to the southbound movement of cars.
Okay, okay. Did you have another question?
No, I just have comments, I'll wait.
Okay. Councilwoman Kasakian?
I asked all my questions, thanks.
Okay. I don't have much, but I did want to see if you could respond to two questions that one of the speakers raised. One was, why couldn't we do more of San Fernando? And the other was about a two-way bike lane. If you could just explain, I know those were in your present, well, the second one was in your presentation, but maybe you could just run through it again for, for everyone's sake.
Let me take that one first, and I'll hand it to staff about the limited of the project on that side of it. But yes, the Alternative 3A was effectively that alternative that provided a two-way cycle track on the west side of San Fernando Road. The space required for that still necessitates the need to remove one lane of traffic on the street. There's just not enough room curb to curb to fit that facility in. Additionally, that alternative, because now we have two-way bike traffic on the west side, we have cyclists that are going against the traffic. That requires traffic signal modifications at each one of those intersections. And those intersections that include the rail corridor is what triggers the need to involve the Public Utilities Commission and MetroLink, and that's a 12- to 18-month process to get through. That's what the detriment to that alternative.
Okay. And the first question?
Mr. Mayor, the, the limits of the project were based on the application, you know, the grant application, I believe, that we had submitted, so that's, those are, that's the extent that we have funding for.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, one more question.
You have another question?
If I may.
Yes.
The images that were shown with the junk trucks along San Fernando, I know this is an issue that I've had conversations with staff about previously. How do they get to just park there? Because I know we had that same issue that I had brought up on Colorado, where one of the mechanic shops was just putting out all the cars and not allowing others to park there. It's not just taking away parking, but it's also, just makes the street look really ugly. And, you know, I see San Fernando also as a connector street, when you're trying to go from Las Feliz to Glendale, and then obviously from Glendale to Burbank. So what rules do we have in place that can help get rid of that? What are some measures that we could put in place? Because that seems to be an ongoing problem.
Councilmember Satrian, I believe the pictures that the speaker was sharing with you and showing were pictures of trucks that haul away junk, per se. They were not junk cars. And I'm not sure if there's a business on San Fernando, or a couple of businesses that are engaged in that kind of business, and those are the trucks they use for their operation and businesses. As far as the auto body shops that you were referring to, code enforcement has been out there, our parking enforcement has been out there, and they cite them. And that's pretty much what we can do. So they remove them as we cite them.
Okay, and they, they can keep them there for, like, three days out of ten?
72 hours per the California vehicle code.
And if it's, even if it's the same vehicle, or they just rotate the cars that they have? Wow, okay. And then, if, if we did go with 2A on the north side, and then just two on the south, would this delay the project implementation?
If we moved forward with 2A to the north, two to the south, the removal of the parking would, our recommendation, the staff would be to, it'd be another round of outreach to those businesses specifically to understand what the impact is to them, to have lost the on-street parking. And we have gone door-to-door through the corridor. We've heard from many of those businesses, and the, the uniform message was, don't touch the parking, they need it. So there is going to, if we move forward with that solution, the engagement with the businesses is going to be a critical step.
Actually, if I may, Councilmember Satrian, we don't have the time to do any additional outreach. We're looking at 10 months to get this project designed and advertised and constructed, so we would have to rely on, you know, the feedback that we got the first time about the impact of removing parking.
Okay, I'll follow the questions I have, I want to hear from my colleagues.
Well, I'll just wait when I make comments. So, okay, do you have comments? We can, I think we can wrap it up.
Well, I think the project is, is a good one. Revitalizing this corridor is a good idea, and we've got the, the funding for it. One thing I noticed in the, the staff report is the fact that if we go with 2A, there is still a possibility in the future that we could add a bike lane on the other side, on the east side. So giving that, given that information, I think the median, the bumpouts, the cross, oh, that reminds me, the crosswalks. I don't see that maroon and yellow, do I, on the, oh, good, okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't going to happen down there. But I think it's a, again, a good compromise. And so I'm going to go along with, with that recommendation that we use Alternative 2A.
2A, okay. Colleagues?
Yeah, so I, I look very close to this proposed improvements, and I can tell you that I'm familiar with some of the issues that Ms. Unger pointed out and others have. I, I think that there's not going to necessarily be an ideal solution for anyone, because people are very used to doing things in a certain way. The businesses are accustomed to feeling a sense, some businesses, not all, but some of the businesses have a sense of entitlement to the parking, to the public parking that's available there. There isn't necessarily adherence to the rules of the road and to the speed limit at various times. It does get congested around rush hour, especially as people are either trying to get onto the 134 freeway or get off of it. But I do believe that one of the things that we continuously hear about, and this is being presented in the, in the frame of, we have to do this for bicyclists, or we have to do this for pedestrians. I'm not necessarily sure if we build it, they will come, but the ones who do use it, I suppose, will feel a little bit safer if we have bike lanes. I personally believe protected bike lanes are the best, but given a number of considerations that we're trying to balance, including the access of first responder vehicles, whether it's police or fire, I think that... it's police or fire, I think that alternative 2A is the best compromise we can come up with. I would also, I also believe that whatever changes we make may have, present some challenges initially, but people will adapt, they will figure out ways around it. As far as San Fernando Road is concerned, and I've said it before in these chambers, and I'll say it again, I have a lot of Burbank envy. One of the few things I envy about Burbank is how nice their section of San Fernando Road looks in comparison to ours, in comparison to what we have in our medians, the trees, the shade, the bus stops, and I think we could do better on our side. Now, having said that, our section of San Fernando is not like Burbank's section of San Fernando. Theirs leads immediately into a very vibrant downtown area, it's more commercial, there's some residential, whereas ours goes through a much more industrial area. It is a lot of businesses, a lot of shops, a lot of mechanic shops and other, other different uses, light industrial. Nevertheless, that shouldn't be an excuse for it to look the way it does. So I think that we need to do some improvements, and I think 2A, hopefully with some very creative, nice landscaping with some more mature trees will make it a more inviting and nicer drive for people to enjoy as they slow down with these new changes. Thank you.
Councilmember Satrian?
I think what we have in front of us is a beautification project, and I think that's what we need to be concentrating on with understanding that it's also an opportunity for us to use it, to enhance it. I'm in agreement with the 2A. I do have a couple of comments with respect to, I think as we're thinking down the road and the opportunities that are there for the future, to be mindful of the type of green that we're installing on the railroad side, and making sure that we're actually on the opposite side where the sidewalk is for us to actually have a lot more shade and shaded trees that allow for pedestrians to have a better experience. I do want to commend the staff and the consultant on your community outreach. I was very impressed to see the door knocking numbers and the different languages in which you communicated in, and keep it a good work. Thanks.
Thanks. And for me, I, I think 2A is a good compromise. I mean, I would, you know, if everything else were equal, I would just go for three or two, but I just think this roadway, it's, it's, it's just too problematic. Not the right time, but maybe something we could come back to in the future if transportation patterns evolve. So I'm good with 2A. I, I am intrigued by this idea of two to the south of the 134. I think, I think the speaker made it, you know, a very convincing case that the businesses that are there have their own parking, and people are not pulling up and parking on the street to engage with those businesses. And a lot of it is red curbs, we're not losing that much parking in that area, so, and I don't know, you say you'd have to go back out and do more outreach, but we've done the outreach, we know the opinions. It's a matter of us making a policy decision. So if my colleagues were, were amenable, I would certainly support two to the south of the 134 and 2A to the north, but I'll leave it, I'll leave it to the rest of them on that. The only other thing I, I do want to bring up kind of a smaller point, which is on slide 10. This was brought to my attention, if you could pull up slide 10 there. I think you're building in a slip lane, right? Is that, that's not there now, right? That, where it says, that slip lane, it says enhanced crosswalk?
Yeah, currently, it is a free right turn movement there. This is the lane that heads on Colorado to the freeway ramp. The crosswalk today goes from curb return to curb return, and there's a painted island out there today.
Right.
This is looking, we're looking at alternatives for this, because we do know the, the challenges of having the interface of a free right turn movement versus pedestrians and cyclists for solutions. This is one of them that we're looking at with a raised island. It does shorten the, the paths of travel, it moves the pedestrian crosswalk across that right turn lane into an area more visible, as opposed to being further around the curb return where it's at today. So there's several alternatives being evaluated. There is no final decision yet on what this configuration's going to look like.
Yeah, that, that, I mean, we've talked about slip lanes before and how slip lanes do encourage speeding through an intersection. Obviously, it makes it pretty easy, and people are oriented towards getting on the freeway, so they've got that, that high-speed mentality. So they're going to be whipping around that. Anybody crossing that is probably at some risk. And you could, you could just have a, a sharp turn radius there, you could just build it out, right? Where you have it painted now, you could build it out. I don't know what you would put there, but, but I would personally, I would like to see us look at ways that we can avoid creating, you know, a passageway there that's going to really, you know, encourage people to speed through it and potentially have conflict with pedestrians. So I would just put that out, but I will take a motion in a second unless anybody has any more comments. Is there, let me just ask, is there support for the?
No.
Two below the 134?
I would be open to it. No. I would not. I think that parking is very important to the business owners, and I think that's what we have to take into consideration as well.
But see, the thing was, she showed how the business owners don't use that parking because they have large parking lots for their businesses. That's where I'm, I'm kind of, that's what was intriguing about that, is if they have their own parking, people visiting those businesses are not parking on the street. I don't know who is parking on the street.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Somerville to kind of talk a little bit more about that outreach and what they found south of the freeway.
Yeah, and it goes back to the door-to-door canvassing of the businesses through the corridor as a whole. And as a unilaterally, each of the businesses were very concerned about losing parking. Not every business has off-site parking for themselves. The parking that was shown off-site are all private lots for businesses. It's not public parking, as was mentioned previously. So it's not like one can, one user can use another parking lot if parking is eliminated. They don't have the right to be using the parking lot if it's not their business. So it's a, it's a little bigger picture view that would have to be looked at about, is there, is there really sufficient parking out there today? But again, what we've heard throughout the outreach efforts was the businesses are reliant on the parking for whether it's employees, whether it's customers.
Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm thinking 2A, 2A.
Okay.
That's my answer.
Okay, well, let's get a motion.
Okay. I'll move, agenda, the motion accepting staff's recommendation to proceed with the design for the implementation of alternative 2A. A second.
Councilmembers Satrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Katsakyan?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, our next item?
Next is Action Item B, Glendale Water and Power, Regarding Professional Services Agreement with Energy and Environmental Economics, Inc., E3, to Assist Glendale Water and Power with the Development of a Plan to Increase Solar Penetration and Develop Additional Distributed Energy Resources, Continued from 8/22/23 CC Meeting. One, Motion Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Energy and Environmental Economics, Inc., to Assist with GWP with the Development of a Plan to Increase Solar Penetration and Develop Additional Distributed Energy Resources in the Not-To-Exceed Amount of $335,875.
Thank you. Who's the mayor? Am I the mayor? I am the mayor. I think I'm the mayor pro temp. I'd like to, I'd like to ask that, because of the importance of this item and the controversy surrounding it, I'd like to ask that we reschedule this for next week when we have a full council here to deliberate. I understand the mayor is going to be out of town, but he will be able to telephonically be at the meeting.
Mayor Pro Tem, the next meeting of city council will be on September 12th.
On September 12th, so if we can, my colleagues would like to agree to postpone this till next week.
I'm in agreement with that.
I'm sorry.
I'm in agreement.
Oh, I didn't understand. It's fine.
I mean, if the mayor has already indicated his willingness to connect to the meeting remotely, who am I to argue? Sure, we can move it. I would be in agreement with my colleagues.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is Action Item C, Community Development, Regarding Landlord-Tenant Ad-Hoc Committee Update on Work Plan, Continued from 8/22/23 City Council Meeting. One, Motion to Approve Landlord-Tenant Ad-Hoc Committee's Suggestions on the Rental Rights Program, with the Intention of Revisiting These Suggestions in a Red Line Version of the Ordinance at a Subsequent Council Meet Session. Two, Motion to Approve Rental Rights Marketing Strategy. Three, Motion to Provide Direction on the Desire to Establish a Dispute Resolution Mediation Program.
Mayor Brotman, the mayor pro temp, Devine, ask that because of the importance of this item and the absence of Councilmember Najarian, we postpone this to the next council meeting on September 12th, when we'll have a full council, and you'll be able to call in, as you had noted. And, and your other two colleagues agreed with that suggestion?
I, I agreed on it based on the assumption that, that the mayor had said that.
We may have to postpone it till, till October, in that case. I mean.
Had you not confirmed?
No, I mean, I'm on a trip to Europe, you know, to get up in the middle of the night to make a vote on something that we talked about is something I could do, but to get on for an important item like this is, is, you know, that's not a reasonable request.
Councilmember Devine, did you have information about the mayor's?
Yeah, I understood that he was able to tele.
Based on?
Yeah, based telephonically.
I did not agree to that.
Well, staff's already gone, so.
Well, then we're going to have to postpone it till.
I'm, I'm a little perturbed that, I was led to believe that the mayor was going to, anyways, I apologize. Mayor Brotman, should have waited for you to return into chambers before we agreed to move on to something.
That would have been nice. Okay.
The mayor, just for clarification, the mayor had indicated that he is able to call in to vote, but as the mayor, again, indicated, maybe he can call in for, to cast a vote, but to participate in deliberations, maybe that'll be difficult for him.
Oh, I, I think it would only be fair that all parties that want to be here are here in person, and so I supported that with the understanding that I was under the impression that the mayor was okay with this.
Okay, so we'll wait until probably the first meeting in October.
It will be October 10th, Mayor Brotman.
Apologies to anyone who, my apologies to anyone who came here expecting to have this discussion this evening.
It is what it is.
Mayor Brotman, Item 8C was already written to the record.
Okay. So where are we now?
Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council, at the last council meeting, last Tuesday, you received a report regarding the landlord-tenant ad-hoc committee update on their work plan. They had primarily three main tasks. That included the rental rights program ordinance, developing education and marketing strategies, and evaluating a voluntary dispute resolution program. At the last meeting, Mr. Zadorian presented the, the first item, the first task, and received direction and suggestions from council, and council decided to continue the other two items to this evening that will be related to marketing strategies and, again, voluntary dispute resolution program that Mr. Zadorian will walk you through.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. As Mr. Galanian said, I'm going to be continuing the discussion on the ad hoc committee's work plan. We're going to start with the marketing aspect and then later on the mediation. So the council tasked with the, the committee with looking into the marketing outreach strategy of the rental rights program. Staff took a couple of reports to the committee, the committee discussed strategies, and staff took their insights and came up with this report that we're presenting today. So the committee had three goals in mind when they discussed the strategy, including increasing awareness, promoting engagement, and providing education and resources. So for the increased awareness, obviously, we want to be, we want the committee to know that we exist, they're aware of us, we want to get the word out on the rental rights program so tenants and landlords are aware of the program and can utilize the services and the protections. To promote engagement, we want the committee, community to be able to come to us, engage with our content, so we understand what their needs are and we can better address those needs. And third, provide education and out, resources. Obviously, we want to be able to have resources available to provide to them when they come to us, when they visit our websites, when they see us on social media. So the first part of that, I have a slide missing here, but the first top part of that was creating a website that would serve as a hub for the rental rights program. Our current website is a little funky, it's hard to navigate, so the goal was to create a website that is user-friendly, easy to navigate. It serves as a central hub for landlords and tenants to access information, guides, find out when events are coming up, frequently asked questions, and an easy place for, for them to access. I have a quick video here of the website, what it might look like. So the main page would include pertinent information, easy-to-access guides, contact information down there. And then up here, you'd have different links that lead to guides, again, for Fair Housing, AB 1482, our main rental rights program, Just Cause, Relocation Assistance, and each of those will have a detailed guide on what those sections entail. And then, again, more guides. And up there, go soon as events, you'll be able to, or resources, I'm sorry. So this page will have a video guide in multiple languages. I forgot to mention that the website will be available in multiple languages, including Armenian, Spanish, Tagalog, and Korean, at the very least. Again, events page, you'll be able to go and see our future upcoming events, an FAQ for any questions that landlords or tenants have, and a contact page. It just has our contact information. So the other aspect of our marketing is social media, something that we need to improve on, and the committee noticed that, and with, as far as social media is concerned, we're going to create new content, hopefully use the city's already existing social media platforms to reach a specific audience. Considering social media, we can target specific audiences that we want to get the information, and Glendale residents, renters, homeowners. Social media is going to be targeting a younger audience versus our traditional medium where we target an older audience. The good thing about social media is that it's organic sharing, the organic sharing allows it to reach a wider audience, so we might create content for a specific audience, but through the medium, it gets shared with an audience that we weren't expecting to share with, so the reach is much wider. We'll create, again, compelling content, infograph, staff describing the program. So our traditional marketing will continue with print material. We plan on sending targeted mailers. We've done this in the past, where we target majority of residents in Glendale and landlords in and outside of Glendale. We will be sending flyers and brochures in the GWP mailers, and we will also plan on sending brochures to any new properties that are purchased in Glendale so the landlords are aware of our rules and regulations. We also plan on having inserts in what used to be called the Thursday folders for GUSD. I'm not sure what that process is now, but they do send out packets to students, so we plan on doing that as well. And another new part of what the committee recommended was creating partnerships in the community with existing organizations. We want to build relationships with management companies, tenant organizations, landlord org. We want to build relationships with management companies, tenant organizations, landlord organizations so we're aware of the problems before they become much bigger problems so we can address them quicker, so we can leverage resources and expertise, so we can train their staff if they need training so we can understand what their needs are as landlords and tenants. And then we will continue community outreach. Our plan is to go into each neighborhood of Glendale, have small intimate meetings. We used to have much larger meetings, but we found that it wasn't effective. Not a lot of people were showing up. But our smaller intimate meetings in specific neighborhoods, we were getting a lot of traction, so we're going to continue that. We'll make sure to cover all areas of Glendale, multiple languages. Each month, we will be at a different neighborhood in Glendale just to make sure that we cover our bases. And then yearly, we will evaluate the effectiveness of the outreach. So based on how, how many people are showing up at our meetings, social media analytics, website reach. And we will refine and optimize based on that data to create a better program moving forward, create a better outreach, and see where we're being effective and where we're not. This is the timeline of how we plan on doing things. So we'll launch the website. We'll conduct surveys in the beginning so we can have something to test against later on in the months. We'll develop print materials in the second month, launch the website, create newsletters, start booking venues for the events. And then onto the third and fourth month, start social media advertising, distributing the print materials. Five, month five and six, GWP mailers, community workshops, more targeted social media advertising. And then the rest of it is basically repeat until month nine, 10, where we analyze the results and either come back to council with a new plan or continue if it's an effective marketing strategy. That concludes the first part as far as advertising.
You want to just move on? We'll do the second part and then?
Well, why don't we just comment on this part first? Well, I just wanted to say it seems like a very comprehensive marketing strategy. You're hitting, you know, every neighborhood, every, trying to get every person in the GWP mailing list. Every language is being considered. You've simplified, I think. I'll have to try it myself then. I'll know the website. So thank you for all of this and I, hopefully that, you know, we can get the word out using all of your new strategies. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I could do.
Okay, okay. Well, then we'll go through this one first.
So currently, how does one get ahold of a live person? I think that the website that you showed has pretty good information on there. But if someone wants to speak to an actual person, I say this because I know that the city went through an exercise of creating a number of phone trees and pathways to try and create efficiencies. I personally am a little old-fashioned and I like to actually speak to a living human being.
Right. So our hotline, we have a hotline. It's on all on, on all of our brochures. It's 818-548-3926. Anytime they call, Andronik behind me will answer. If he doesn't answer, it'll get transferred to me. So we always have that.
Okay.
And rent@glandaleca.gov if anyone wants to email us. Both, again, myself and Andronik respond.
All right. And so this is the number through which we received, what was it, about 600 or 800 calls or?
The 600 calls would be this year, but it's already 800 since I believe the report was released, but 800 calls.
That's the number that people are calling? That's how, how we're getting that figure? So after someone calls that number and we've spoken to them, do we ask a question? How did you hear about this number?
No, we have not been asking that question.
Okay. I would like to see us ask that question because that is going to help us understand where and how people are getting information. They obviously found the number. It would be good to know which of the methods of getting the information out there is most effective. Maybe people are using an online search engine to come across it or, you know, they're meandering through the maze of a municipal website to find it. Also, bus ads, are we gonna be utilizing bus shelter ads or our own B-line buses to promote this program?
That has been a thought, but we haven't really looked into it. We can't look into doing that. We thought about it, but nothing serious. We can't.
Well, I would certainly support the idea of using bus, our bus system to get the information out there. In fact, the more we can do, the better. But I also would like us to know how people are hearing about us. And then also if there is the possibility, I don't want to inundate folks with information, but getting a survey answered or a few questions that can ascertain what their impression of, of the service that they received or the answers they received was. Was it helpful? Was it not helpful, et cetera? Thank you.
You threw the website really quickly. I didn't catch, is there an option for translation of the website materials?
Yes, we're gonna have it available in, again, Spanish, Armenian, Korean, Tagalog, and every other language that we have access to through the channel later.
Okay. I think the two other, I mean, this is really impressive and extensive. I would definitely add ethnic media to your list for outreach. I think whether it's the Latino community, the Filipino and Korean, or the Armenian, the demographic tends to also, the most vulnerable tend to also turn to, you know, even like the Armenian TV stations for their information. And whether it's through interviews or through an ad that we can, we can place. And then I think with the partnerships, one of the names or one of the categories that I think is missing is the senior buildings and the senior housing buildings. I think, you know, making sure that this information is also reaching the seniors would be critical. That's it.
Thank you. And yeah, I'll just say, I think this is really a strong, comprehensive plan. And I'm excited to see us execute it. On the, on the rotating workshops, I like, I like that and hope that, and I think the intent is, is to be reaching out to both tenants and landlords and making sure that the community, you know, both, both of these groups understand what the rules of the road are. Because as I've spoken to some people about, I think part of the problem is people just don't necessarily know what the obligations are of a landlord, what the, what the obligations are of a tenant and the rights and, and all that. So, so it's great. Yeah, okay. Let's move on then to the next piece. We're not done, we're not done with the agenda yet. Yeah. We'll move on to the second part.
So the third action, or the third item that the committee was assigned to review was a mediation program and the possibility of implementing one in Glendale. I'm gonna present the PowerPoint similar to what was presented to the committee and then we can discuss their, so the suggestions on a mediation program. So as you all are aware, a mediation program is designed to basically bring two parties together to come to conclude or work things out, as simple as that. Two parties that have an issue, it's designed to put them in a room together so they can come to a conclusion that's beneficial for both parties or find some common ground. If the council decides that they want to move forward with a mediation program, there are gonna be a few points, decision points. We'll have to decide whether it's a voluntary program or mediation or mandatory program. So that would mean whether the landlords or tenants are required to participate or their participation is voluntary. We would have to figure out what type of disputes the program addresses, rent increases, secure deposits, evictions. Who operates the program, whether it's professional staff that we hire or outside consultant or commission or board. Outcome type, binding or non-binding. Technically, this would have to be non-binding. Otherwise, it would fall into the category of arbitration. And we're looking at mediation. So this would have to be non-binding. And then exemptions, what type of properties are exempt, who's exempt, is it duplexes, single families included in the program? Hearing type, is it a formal process? Is it going to be informal, is it just a phone call? Have people discuss it over the phone on Zoom? And then is, will there be an ability to appeal the decision if a decision is made? So when staff looked into programs, we looked at other municipalities that had similar mediation programs. We focused on the city of Burbank, County of Marine, and Santa Monica, city of Santa Monica. They all have varying programs. That's why we decided to go with these three. And they were the only ones that responded to our emails. City of Burbank has a program that's ran through its commission. The commission is similar to our committee. It's made up of landlords and tenants that are assigned by their city council. But it's a non-mandatory, non-binding program. They address rent increases, evictions, relocations, basically all tenant and landlord-related issues. In 2022, they had about 87 individuals or families and asked for mediation from the committee. They submitted to the city for review. So the way their process works is if someone calls into their, in city of Burbank, they say, I'm having a problem with my landlord. I'm having a problem with my tenant. The staff offers mediation through their commission. Form is filled out, it's given to the commission. The individual either goes in front of the commission or if it's, it's something that the staff can handle, they give them their solutions. I have a little excerpt from one of their meetings. So someone went to the commission for mediation and basically, it's very basic. All they did was provide information to the tenant. So that their program is bare none. It's very informal. It's just information. They don't really get in a room together with the tenant and landlord and try to discuss their issue. So it's very basic, just for information.
I have a question. Yeah. I thought that Burbank had a three-person committee that handled these and it was mostly education outreach. It wasn't, I didn't think it was the commission that handled these cases.
So I believe the commission assigns their members to handle them. So he, they might have assigned three individuals to handle these types of cases. But each time, I think, commission members are assigned depending on what type of problems the public goes through.
They had, they had at least one resident on the, on the, on that committee. Susie Jacobs was one of them and she, she resigned. So I don't even know how, what, what they're doing right now, but it was mostly outreach and education, like you said. It wasn't really mediation.
Yeah, that's the, commission job is education and outreach, but they, they also mediate or what they call mediation. So we spoke to the staff regarding funding. They said, because it's part of their bigger housing program, they couldn't identify exactly how much it cost. But they did say it's about $100,000 to administer a program. They have dedicated staff just for the program or one mediator, I should say. And then Marine County is a mandatory non-binding program. With Marine County, the only portion of that's mandatory is when the rent is increased over 5%. So if a landlord increases a tenant's rent over 5% and that tenant wants mediation, they can request it and the landlord is required to participate if they want the rents increased. Tenant can agree with the increase, doesn't have to request mediation. But if they do, landlord is required to participate. All of their disputes, secure deposit evictions, they're not mandatory so that the landlord does not have to participate. They had 118 cases were mediated, 287 were requested. The process, I forgot to mention Burbank, it takes about a month to mediate the process. And for Marine County's case, it's eight to 12 weeks. And their budget, again, it was part of their bigger program. They weren't able to narrow anything down. With Marine County, they actually worked with a couple of other cities to administer the program. And they also have dedicated staff. And last, Santa Monica, it's a non-man, uh, non-mandatory, non-binding program. It's part of their bigger rent control program. They cover all tenant landlord disputes. But again, it's not mandatory to participate. They had 111 rent decrease cases, 11 construction decrease cases, and 16 excessive rent cases. They take about 180 days to respond, but currently it takes much longer according to staff. And their total budget is $5 million and they, again, couldn't pinpoint how much of that is spent on mediation. $5 millions for their entire rent control budget. And they have multiple staff that administers, one hearing officer, oh, sorry, three hearing officers, one mediator. So they got a, a big staff and they cover all their rent control units. So it's a much, much bigger program. Before we move on to potential costs, I do want to mention that Glendale had a program about in 2002. It lasted all of six months, I believe. It was a voluntary program. No one participated, so it was discontinued. Just wanted to mention that we did attempt this about 20 years ago. Again, it was voluntary. Six months, I believe, it lasted before it was discontinued. So potential costs, again, we couldn't get anything specific from the other cities, but staff was able to put something together based on how much it would cost to hire mediator or professionals that do mediation or an agency that would perform those services. For something that's more formal, for a formal process is upwards of $300,000. For mediation with the commission, similar to Burbank's, we estimated around $90,000 most. For an informal voluntary participation, again, similar to the one we had earlier, we think if we hire a professional, it would be upwards of $200,000. And then if we outsource, it could cost anywhere from $20,000 to $100,000, depending on how many cases we're referring to them and how we set up the programs. So the ad hoc committee discussed everything. They recommended that the city at least try for a few months, a mediation program, a voluntary mediation program, a non-binding to cover most, every, everything tenant or landlord could have a dispute about rent increases, secure deposit evictions, habitability, relocation, and other relevant issues. They suggested a hybrid model with a board and commission similar to Burbank and dedicated staff. So a mediator plus a board. Again, they discussed that the mediator, mediator should have the proper qualifications and training to mediate. They felt that a formal process would be best, so nothing informal. They want both tenant and landlord in a room together to discuss their issues with a mediator present instead of maybe a staff member calling the landlord and tenant trying to mediate the situation for them. They want a formal process. I think that concludes my presentation. So ultimately, the committee's suggestion was to have a program and a trial run and then ultimately see how that works before we commit to anything.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if we have questions before we go to the callers. Are there questions? Questions?
I just have one. Have we looked to see if LA County has anything? Because I'm looking, you know, one of these options that you've laid out in front of us is.
So LA County has a mediation program through their Consumer and Business Affairs Department, I believe. It works similar, tenants, landlords request mediation. They can't contact them, schedule a date. It's voluntary, so neither party has to participate. I'm not 100% sure. I contacted them to see how many cases they've had within Glendale. I haven't heard back. But that is an option.
But Marine County's is mandatory.
Marine County is mandatory only when the increase is above 5%, or rent increase is above 5%. The other issues, they're not mandatory. So if a tenant and landlord are having a problem with the laundry facility not working, they're not gonna dispute that, those types of situations.
So Marine Counties is required if it's, sorry, councilmember, I saw that again. It's required for five, more than 5%. How does that work with the state rules and caps?
So the state cap is 8.8%. I would assume that if an increase is above 5%, they require that mediation to take place. So their increase can't be above 8% at no, anytime. But if it's above 5% and the tenant wants the mediation, the landlord is required to participate.
And also in Marine Ca, oh, I'm sorry, that's Santa Monica, they have fees that are attached to their mediation.
Right, their fees are, I think, mostly related to their rent control program. That, because it's a much different animal, Santa Monica, but we want to include it just so there's a variety. Because a lot of these mediation programs are attached to rent control programs throughout California at least.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you have?
Do you know anything about us working with Neighborhood Legal Services?
Right. Neighborhood Legal Services, we do refer people there, but they only handle evictions and at the point of where there are unlawful detainers. So if a landlord issues an eviction. issues an eviction, they won't take it on until that tenant has officially been evicted through unlawful detainer through the courts. They're just inundated, so they don't have time to take on every case.
And do we know of any other community resources that are available that don't have that load?
We refer to Housing Rights Center as well, Armenian Bar Association, but everybody's pretty, pretty busy.
Okay.
Okay. Let's, let's hear from our speakers, and do we have any callers?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. Well, we have three speakers. We'll start with Karen Quoc.
Hi, I'm Karen Quoc. I watched most, but not all, eleven meetings of the tenant landlord committee. I spoke once or twice, but mostly I listened with a lot of parental pride. As Mr. Peter Zovek noted, the mediator was released after a couple of meetings because they were not needed. Mr. Zovek and Mr. Sodarian did a fine job of mediating discussions themselves. By the way, that's a genuine compliment from me to the city. I don't make them off, and please enjoy it while it lasts. If the five of you have not watched any of these committee meetings, I highly recommend that you do so, because they are unlike the discussions held by any other city board or commission. I suggest that you watch the meeting from February twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, where two tenants came to talk about the serious electrical problem they had for months in an apartment they rented from one of the landlord members of the tenant landlord committee. That particular landlord had spent months bragging about what a great landlord he was, and how his tenants had no complaints about him. Well, after that, more of his tenants came forth to complain about their apartments. This is why it's critical to hear from tenants directly, instead of relying on the word of landlords. If you see any other landlords who come to City Hall bragging about what great landlords they are, I suggest that you take their claims with a bucket of salt and ask to hear what their tenants think. The committee members, staff, and public engaged in lively discussions to reach the recommendations that you're considering today. The gentleman in the neutral seat on the committee is actually a landlord, so if anything, the committee's conclusions represent the views of landlords more than that of tenants. Mr. Neutral Landlord Judge was part of the legal team that wrote Glendale's Just Cause Rejection Ordinance about twenty years ago, and he was the first to say that the ordinance needs to be clarified and updated. I love it when committee members and city staff cover all the points that need to be covered, so that I don't need to say anything. I have one suggestion, however, from my unique vantage point. Most of the committee members do not watch city council meetings. And correct me if I'm wrong, but none of you have watched any tenant landlord committee meetings. This makes it hard for the committee to understand how they can advise the council, and also makes it hard for the council to know what the committee can do. This gap can be bridged by assigning a council liaison to each city commission or board, like my former city of Salem, Massachusetts. Salem has over forty city commissions and eleven council members, so that works out to about four commissions per council member. Glendale has thirteen city commissions, so that would be two or three commissions per council member. This would improve the flow of information between commissions and the city council in both directions, while also lifting pressure from city staff. This is why I have no problem increasing council member salaries, because I plan to make you all work for it. Also, yes, committees should act as a body for mediation or arbitration. I spent many, many hours in this chamber listening to design review board cases, which mostly boiled down to private disputes between homeowners. Tenant landlord issues deserve at least as much airtime, considering that we're the majority of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Brodmann, members of the city council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I took the liberty of writing up some of the topics that I wanted to address today. The, the city has had a resource that is quite valuable, I think, and that resource is the call log of all of the tenant and landlord questions and complaints that have been prevalent in the past few years. So apparently, this year, we've had about eight hundred of these particular calls, and I am concerned that that particular log was not included as part of the dialogue that was presented to the Adha Committee. If we are, if we really want to address the issues that are relevant and present to a lot of people, those call logs should have been parsed, categorized, presented in summary, evaluated, and say, here are the most salient problems that we have in Glendale. These are the most common questions that people have. And they become a guide for you to define how should you do the outreach? How should you advertise it? Who really needs the information? Who absolutely needs to have it? So if there is a purchase of a new building, and the prior landlord wants to increase rents, those tenants need to have that information right away as to what are their rights. If a new landlord thinks that the law allows him to do certain things and the law doesn't, he needs to be clear on what those questions are. If a tenant is being given an increase that is beyond what the law allows, they should have that information. So any type of outreach needs to address that data. How many are there? What are the number of problems that these other services provide? If Neighborhood Legal Services is collecting the data and servicing people, shouldn't you have that data as well? So my point is that proper data collection, proper data analysis gives you the guidelines as to what policies to implement and how to implement them. I'm of the belief that a periodic evaluation of those results, how many calls you're getting, how many complaints you have relative to from one year to the next, gives an evaluation of whether the ordinance is working or not, and whether the outreach is working or not. And if it is, I'm assuming that the calls will be reduced by the following year, right? That fewer contentious problems you have. And any information that an ambulance man would actually execute would also need to be analyzed. So my recommendation is that it be brought back to the Adha Committee for evaluation as to how to establish proper ways of evaluating the data and periodic reviews. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I'd like to first acknowledge Mr. Herbert Milano and Karen Quoc for the research and the time they've spent on this issue. I know one person is a landlord and the other person is a tenant. Great team. I'm neither, okay? But what caught my eye was when the mayor says, we need more outreach. People don't have any knowledge of what's going on in the city on these issues. Survey, one survey said they had six hundred people filled out, and the other one's survey was eight hundred, I think. And you said, wow, that's a lot of people. Really? Think about it. In my last community newsletter, I put an announcement that keep our kids home on August the twenty-fifth, and it went to about twenty-five thousand inboxes for people to read, with about fifty percent viewership minimum. Now, that's an outreach. You saw on the TV, thousands of people were out there protesting, keeping their kids home and so forth. Your Rockhaven Sanitarium here locally has put an ad in my newsletter, announcement, I put it in, no charge. The American Legion has put announcements in my newsletter, no charge. And Fentanyl Crisis, a woman contacted me about a meeting, and I put it in your Glendale Community Newsletter. Your Glendale Community Newsletter, folks, is free. It costs the residents and the city council zero dollars. It's a free service. Why don't you take advantage of it? Doesn't cost anything. We need to get input on these different surveys. When, again, when the mayor says, well, we need more knowledge of the information, well, maybe if you gave it out to more people, they would respond to your surveys. Again, look what happened last week on the twenty-fifth of August, when we had thousands of people stay home. Thank you very much. Oh, by the way, mjmoill@gmail.com is my email address to send and ask for...
Yeah, one thing I want to caution you on is that you should speak on the agenda item and not give promotions for your newsletter. That's not what the agenda item is about. Okay. Do we have, we have no callers?
Mayor Brodmann?
No, please sit down. You're finished.
That's your opinion.
Okay. Let's hear from the caller.
I have a couple of questions. What are the most common issues that we receive phone calls concerning?
So I actually have the numbers. I'll put them on screen in the presentation. Well, it depends on the year. So in 2019, when the program first started, most of our calls were about the program. What is it? What's going to happen? How is this going to impact my property? How is this going to impact my rental? So 2019, ninety-two percent of those calls were general rental rights related. And then towards the end, AB fourteen eighty-two passed, so we had a couple of questions about that, one percent, and we had some eviction, calls about evictions. Moving into 2020, the pandemic hit, and eighty-five percent of our calls were just COVID-related. That's all we were handling, COVID-related, and then here and there, AB fourteen eighty-two evictions. And then in 2021, again, still pandemic, seventy-seven percent of the calls were COVID-related, but we started getting more AB fourteen eighty-two as, you know, pandemic rules were starting to expire. Twenty-twenty-two, finally, when most of the rules expired, we still had a lot of calls related to COVID, about twenty-eight percent. And then there was a big jump in AB fourteen eighty-two, obviously, because none of the COVID protections were there anymore. So tenants were looking for AB fourteen eighty-two protections, landlords were asking how much we can increase rents. There was a little bit of a jump in eviction calls and other types of calls. Most recently, and this is based on the six hundred number, so a number from a couple of weeks ago, we're receiving calls about general rental rights program, rent increases, banking, relocation, things like that. COVID calls have almost disappeared because all the protections are gone. No one's calling about that anymore. AB fourteen eighty-two, we still get some calls on, but I think people understand the ordinance now, so they don't, they don't call us as much about that. Eighteen percent of calls have been evictions-related, so we've seen a bump in that. And then thirty-four percent in other category. The other category basically covers things like you call, complain about mold, security deposits, my landlord doesn't let me have a dog, so all kinds of other subjects. These are the types of calls we've been getting.
And that's the last line? The last line is up to now?
Total. So basically, we've had twenty-nine percent of total calls have been general rental rights related, forty-seven percent of calls have been COVID-related, ten percent AB fourteen eighty-two. This is total.
Oh, I see. You averaged, you averaged. I got you.
Total from, for that topic. So basically, forty-seven percent of all calls we've received have been COVID-related, which is a big chunk. So COVID had a big impact on the program as it did the rest of the world.
But, but these numbers are, are the program that we have right now in place, the rental rights program?
Right. It's based on our call log. So originally, call log was just designed to, for internal use, for staff to be able to track calls and make sure that we return calls. If somebody calls back and says, I called a week ago, we can see that we responded to them, whatnot. As time went on, and as more and more people wanted access to the data, we started collecting more information just to be able to extract something from it. And I think this year is where we have the most information. Previous years, we weren't collecting detailed information. So eviction says eighteen percent, and you're just seeing evictions, but we're also collecting information on evictions that are related to major rehab, evictions that are related to owner movement. And we just started, so we don't have a lot of numbers on that. But as the year continues, we will. We actually, our IT guy created a new program to log everything, and we were using Excel before, and so we weren't able to collect a lot of information.
And how often does the city attorney's office get involved in these phone calls and questions?
I'd say we go to Lucy maybe once a week. Lucy Varpegian, the city attorney.
And then I go to her once a week. No, kidding.
Yes, just to clarify our understanding of things, or if there's a, we get some complex situations sometimes, and we just want a professional attorney opinion before we tell anyone anything.
Okay, thank you. Let me see. Are the calls, have the calls lessened since, I guess, twenty nineteen?
So the number of calls, these are the number of calls. Again, pandemic, obviously, we had a lot of calls. The calls haven't exactly lessened. I'd say the pandemic was just more in, for 2020 than we've ever had. But I'd say we're, we're set to hit about twelve hundred. We're at eight hundred right now, so in a couple of months, we should probably be at twelve hundred, if not more.
And we're able, and we're able to handle all those calls where you seem to be?
Yeah. And I'm sorry, these aren't just calls, there are emails as well.
Oh, emails and, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any general comments on direction on?
On the mediation?
On, yeah.
Well, let's see. Well, you know, this, there's, seems to be with all of the different cities being mentioned, there's a plethora of challenges that go along with this. More bureaucracy, more staff, more funding. Landlords, you know, if it's voluntary, you know, you get a, you have an issue. If it's involuntary, some landlords won't want to come, they don't want to engage. And, you know, and I, interesting, it says, the success depends on the cooperation and good faith of landlords and tenants. And that's, that sometimes, I think, can be, you know, an issue. Landlords seem to hold the power, tenants may feel intimidated, and then, of course, you have the fairness is compromised. So I have, my feeling is, and I'll just make this very brief, I also like the proposition, the proposal of increased penalties, except for the one about legal support, because that's just way too expensive. But increased penalties, so that if a landlord is called on the carpet for doing, that's a, but for, you know, not complying, or have inspections, so that those folks that have problems in their, in their apartments, those are taken care of, that we have, you know, the ability to conduct inspections, and then if nothing happens, then impose penalties. But I think staff is handling this beautifully, the rental rights program. You're providing assistance, you're providing counseling, you're providing legal aid, and I, I just think that that's the way to go. I know that Burbank is strictly outreach and education, so they're not very effective. The other ones, you know, Santa Monica is just like way out of, way out of, you know, our financial category, and it's just spending a lot of money. So I, I just feel like we really don't need a mediation, a commission, a committee. You know, you get all involved in that bureaucracy, and, and then we're in, we get into more trouble. So I, I would be against a mediation. I think I'd go with staffs continuing this program. I think it's very effective. I think you're doing a great job. I know whenever I have, get an email from a resident with a question, with a problem, I immediately email staff, and the problem is taken care of almost immediately. So I think that this is the best way for us to handle it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rosatrea.
So my understanding is from, from the last meeting that you are going to go back to the committee with items that we discussed from last meeting, right?
I believe the plan was to come back with a redline version. We were going to go back to stakeholders, see what their opinions are, and then bring it back to the committee, I mean, I'm sorry, the council.
Okay, because I, my understanding from last meeting was that we had an opportunity for there to be one meet, and for us to get a better sense of where the committee stood, because there was no, like, there wasn't closing that gap with the committee members. When I look at this list, it, it kind of feels the same, where, like, the recommendations are kind of all over the place, where it's recommending a hybrid, and it's recommending non-mandatory, and then the whole nine yards. So I would like to get a little more clarity from, from the committee on that. I would note that, I know you mentioned that we had a program that didn't work for a couple of months. I, I have an issue with any program that operates for a couple of months, because that's not sufficient time for the public to, to learn about the program's availability. So if you're going to say, you know, we'll open this up for six months and see if it's working, you know, by the time, like, people actually find out about it, it's probably more than six months. And so from the get-go, I feel like that kind of a short-lived pilot... And so from the get-go, I feel like that kind of a short-lived pilot is just setting up the program to fail. I would like for us to see if we can explore some options with the county for a more formal program. I know that while our staff has done an incredible job in guiding residents, I know that there's been so many occasions where we provide the information. And a lot of these times, there's been people with language barriers, where I myself feel like I'm just giving, you know, being given the runaround, because the services are just not available for the renters. And so I actually hate giving that, those phone numbers out, knowing that at their probably most stressful time, I'm adding additional stress, because it's hope with possibly no resolution and support. And that's usually for renters, right, that also have an issue with getting resources to begin with. And so I would be interested in something a little more formal that helps with that portion, not just the education and the guidance that we're providing now, and then just the better feedback from the committee members and the stakeholders.
Well, I think one of the benefits of what we did through the ad hoc committee exercise was bringing landlords and residents, tenants together to be able to have these discussions. I didn't watch all the meetings. I did watch a couple of them, just parts of it because of time allowances. But I echo what was said in terms of how they were run, how people interacted. And I think that there's something to be said about that process that I think we need to encourage further. I would like to see the committee, whether it's the current committee or different iterations of it, continue to meet. I don't know if my colleagues have any interest in making it a more formal committee. But I think that one of the things that's come from it is, as you've mentioned, that people have a place that they can go to, to petition, to raise issues, to bring ideas forth, and for those to be flushed out and discussed, hearing from all sides. I think that within this report, I would have liked to have seen some of the more specifics, like, the percentages that you gave was good in terms of inquiries. I would like to know, like, how many of those were calls, how many of them were emails? And you may have that, and you can provide that. But there is something to be said for what someone who spoke this evening from the audience raised, which is that the information as to what people are bringing up is the issues that we should be addressing. Now, there may be some things that fall through the cracks, and hopefully, with better advertising, people are aware that there is a resource available to them, that they can get answers, and they'll be able to contact whatever group, agency, city official to get answers. In addition to that, there has been talk from at least one of the committee members, and something that I've really liked, I've talked about before, the idea of someone who is an ombudsman-type role, someone who can troubleshoot, who can point people to the right resources, be they whether in our city, can point them to the right sections of the law, and direct, whether it's the landlord or the tenant, to where they can get the best information. And looking at the costs of what different committees do, I think that if you were to just pay one person, even if it was someone who could do it part-time, even if they were an hourly, if it wasn't a fully loaded, full-time employee of the city at first, to see how it would work, I think that we would reap the benefits of it, as well as the residents and the business owners and landlords and tenants. So those are my general thoughts on it. I would like us to see more advertising, multilingual advertising, using all the methods that were already stated available to us. And also, there is something, I think, to be said to see if Glendale can adopt and modify AB 1482 with special features. I think that's important. The more we can simplify things, I think the better it is for all parties involved. So those are my general thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'll start off with, you know, thanking the landlord-tenant commission. And I see there's one member of the landlord-tenant commission there in the back, Thiel Marchand, who I understand was one of the most active and productive members of the commission. So thank you, and thanks to all the members of the commission, if they're listening or not, and to staff, because this has been, this is complicated, and you've done a great job, I think, in summarizing the work that came out of that. So hats off to you. On this particular topic, I'm also not in favor of setting up a formal mediation body. I think it is kind of unnecessary bureaucracy, and I think it could just lead to overly lengthy resolution times when issues come forward. I would much rather see us, and I'm glad to see that Mr. Milano had it on the sheet that he handed out. I think he's right. Beef up the hotline. Maybe we need maybe we need some help there, and maybe we link it to this idea of an ombudsman, because that's another idea that I really think is great. So I think the idea is, like, instead of having, you know, this formal commission that kind of mediates disputes, have a connection between the hotline and somebody, an ombudsman, or maybe we have a panel of ombudsmen that can handle cases, depending on when they're available, but have them go and make calls, just an informal process. But as Mr. Milano explained to me in a meeting yesterday, you know, lots of times, there are just misunderstandings, you know. And if you could just talk to both sides, you know, you can, if you have the right person doing it, you could talk sense and resolve some of these issues, maybe about something that needs to be repaired, or whatever it might be, right? So I would like to see something like that. The other thing I would like to see us do is consider funding some more dedicated legal services for both tenants and landlords, because we know, you know, neighborhood legal services are backed up, housing rights center is backed up. Armenian Bar Association, I don't know as much about how they're, you know, what their workload looks like. But especially if you're going to be doing all this marketing, and people are going to learn more about the program, they're going to learn more about the hotline, they're going to start calling in. We want to be able to send them somewhere. You know, we've got an, if we have, like, an ombudsman, that's great. But I think that ombudsman also needs, to be able to refer something to, you know, somebody who can provide more serious legal advice. So I've heard of cities doing this. I forget the city, but they've basically financed, you know, like a dedicated person or a certain number of hours from one of these legal service organizations to be, like, even sitting at a city facility, like, available to come in and get those services, so that we can make sure that anybody that needs, you know, free or low-cost legal service gets it, right? So that's kind of where I'd like to see us end up. And before I conclude, I do want to go back, because we've probably all been getting these emails. But I know I've gotten a bunch of emails about, you know, why is council doing this? Why is council doing that? And, or why is staff recommending X, Y, Z? And I just kind of want to clear it. Staff is not recommending a vacancy tax. And council does not seem, as far as I can tell, interested in pursuing a vacancy tax. Staff is not recommending a rent registry. And although, yes, I brought it up years ago, but at the moment, I mean, I don't think there's anybody here on this diocese recommending a rent registry. And I've also heard people say, "Well, we don't need more rent control." I don't think anybody here is talking about more rent control. What we're talking about is streamlining the program that we have in light of what we've learned over the years and in light of AB 1482, which has its own provisions. And we should do a better job of, you know, dovetailing our rental rights program with AB 1482, and just simplifying things, as Councilmember Kasakian, I think, said, and I heard it elsewhere. Just simplify, simplify, simplify. So, you know, especially on that, you know, the formula that we have for relocation assistance if somebody raises rent more than seven percent, you know, really simplify that. Maybe just a flat amount, irregardless of the type of property, the income of the person, the length of the, just keep it really simple so that people understand what this program is about. That's really what we want to do, and I just want to kind of make sure people understand that that's our intent. So that's basically what I have to say.
I actually, like, you know, based on your comments and Councilmember Kasakian's, I felt like the city staff already kind of takes that role on, of both guiding and providing resources. So if I'm misunderstanding what the role of that additional person would be, if you may, can you explain it to me?
So I think that there are issues that are sometimes more complicated and outside the scope of what the housing staff alone can do. You'll have landlords who, you know, are longtime landlords, have had a property for a while. All of a sudden, they have to do something that state law mandates or something that the city requires, or just provide something for a tenant. They don't know where to go, right? They don't know which department in the city to apply to. I'm not a landlord, but I can tell you, when we had to replace our dishwasher, I learned that in the city of Glendale, if you want to replace a dishwasher, you need a permit. And there's a whole permit process that requires you to go online. And if you're not computer savvy, you're an older, a senior person, or perhaps challenged in the tech world, you know, good luck navigating it for the first time. The answer, ombudsman. You can have a tenant, as I've had, who has a special needs child. All of a sudden, they are falling behind on either rent, or they're in between jobs, or something happens in regards to a child whose special needs. They may not need a tenant landlord mediation or questions that the housing staff can provide, but an ombudsman can connect them to different social service organizations and nonprofits that can help them make it from point A to point B, from one month to the next, with minimal impact on their lives and stress. Answer is ombudsman. So I think that when we say an ombudsman, it's, I think of it a little bit like the, I've always said, the James Garner character in that movie, The Great Escape, the guy who could get you anything, the guy who could get you chocolate, or could get you whiskey in a World War II POW camp. Someone who knows where to go to get the answers. Because a lot of times, when you're stressed, as you stated, and you're looking for answers, you're confused as to where to go. But someone who's trained or understands the city and the different organizations can help point you in the right direction.
Yeah, and I would just like to add to that, that, you know, this idea of an ombudsman, it is similar to what staff is doing right now. But I think that, I think we need more, and especially if we're going to be promoting this program, we're going to be getting more people calling into the hotline. I don't think we're going to have the resource to do it. You know, I also know, it's a special skill, and not taking, you know, wanting to take away from Cipon and his group, but it's a special skill. I had a situation, and Thiel in the back knows all about it, because she helped me out with it. But somebody that came to my coffees a couple of times with a problem with rats in her unit, and she had to move out, and she was in a hotel, and she, you know, or she was at, whatever she was. Anyway, and I know she called in, and she did get some help, but I think she was referred to, you know, I don't know, LA County sanitation, or she was referred here and there, but her English was not good. She didn't have the wherewithal to figure this out. She really needs somebody who could do more than what staff can do, could really hold her hand and take her. Yeah, but they're not going to do that. They don't have the resources to really hold somebody's hand through all the phone calls that have to be made, all the follow-up that has to be made. So I do think having somebody from the outside just enhances that service, and I don't think it's that expensive to do. So that's, I think that's what, that's at least what's on my mind.
So I would. Well, my question is, what kind of training would they need? What, do we have to train them, or do they have to learn our, I mean, what's?
Probably.
Yeah.
Well, isn't that what, kind of what Lucy does? I mean, she, or your staff, the those that you're working with?
So staff does their best to connect any caller to the resources they need. And if it's within the city, I think we do a pretty good job of it. If it's outside of the city, we might refer to the organization. We're not going to go hunt down an individual that they need to speak to. We'll refer them to the organization. But if it needs to be that detailed, where you're holding the hand, walking them to that agency, making sure they get the help they need, we don't do that at the moment. But we do the best within the city.
Yeah.
So I mean, I.
You were going to say something more.
So I would be open to that. I would also like to see kind of the structure we could work with the city attorney's office on this, where there is a specific designated attorney that the public knows about. It's not that they're calling you, and then you're internally, or we're rerouting that. I think looking at the city attorney's office and like how we've kind of built up capacity over the years, there might be room for that as well in there.
Yeah, if I could address that. I think, so one of the challenges with our office is we cannot provide legal advice to third parties. We can, we obviously provide, interpret, you know, we will interpret our own code for public when there's a dispute, for example. We also, obviously, we're involved in enforcement of the law. But a lot of these disputes are a private dispute between a landlord and tenant, so we cannot be, we can't advise them on landlord-tenant law. And that's really not the, even the goal of the rental rights program is to provide the resources, explain how our rental rights program works to the public, how the, what the interaction is with 1482, because there is so much interaction. But at the end of the day, we always have to advise them to seek another resource if they still have questions. So that's sort of the challenge with, I mean, we certainly work with the staff. If there's a desire to have this ombuds person to kind of work with the staff and figure out how mechanically it works. But our role has to be limited. We are limited by the charter to not providing advice to members of the public or providing them legal assistance on private disputes, which in large regard, that's what landlord-tenant is, right? It's a dispute between two parties in a business transaction.
I would say that I'm not looking for the private disputes. I think if more folks in our community knew that they could turn to the city to get clarification on the law, and that the city attorney's office is available, I want them to know that that is actually available, and that is part of the role, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you have enough direction?
I think we have enough direction.
Okay.
Just, I think that staff needs the approval of the marketing strategy.
Right.
That's a motion.
Approval of.
The marketing strategy.
So moved.
Oh, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so we'll have a roll call on that. Thank you.
Councilmembers Dasadrian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Brotman.
Yes. Thank you. What's next, please?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have five speaker cards for oral communication.
Okay. Anybody on the phones? Okay. Okay. And I'm going to start, and then I'm going to run to the bathroom, and hopefully, something drastic won't happen, okay? Arx and Onion. You are first for oral communications.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to hit a couple of points. I submitted, I took my time over the weekend. It was actually pretty fun working on the maps. It was almost like a puzzle, especially with the colors and all that stuff. So I came up with map 125. I think it was uploaded yesterday or something. And I just wanted to, it was pretty, I mean, I didn't see any maps out there currently that included like a separate region for, well, I saw a couple that included a separate region for central Glendale. I think they have, they're going to be growing, obviously, over time. And then they have their, they're going to have their own very unique needs in the downtown area. And then, yeah, so that. And then I was walking on Artach Avenue, and I think there might be a project about this. I was looking it up on the website, but definitely those, like, tables and chairs do not seem comfortable. And then my friend was telling me that apparently they get chained up at night, which is so unsightly and not really like the vibe for downtown Glendale. But I'm assuming that's going to be included in the, I think it's called Activate Artach. I don't know if that's still happening, but. And then my third point was just about, apparently, there's a dog park being proposed for Brand Park. I got an email from the Tea House that they're not interested in that, and I completely agree. I think that's not, is that happening? Is that? Huh? I don't want to speak on something. I don't want to speak on something that is, has already been addressed in previous meetings, but anyways, yeah, I don't, the good dog park belongs in Brand Park. It's just also like not the vibe of that area. But anyway, those are my thoughts for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Vahe Muradyan?
Hello, councilmembers. I was here in this room at the last council meeting because I had gone through all the possible departments I could regarding some false accusations in court filed by the city attorney's office. One of those departments even being the police department, where I made a police report, thinking I had rights, because it does involve a crime. Police closed it without ever reaching out and ignored the entire probably half an hour report I made and all the documents I submitted. So my only other option was to come here and bring it to your attention for it to be looked into respectfully. I don't think I did a good enough job last time, because it never was since August 8, so I'm here to try again. You have an employee named Mahik Saferian who decided to call the police, making false accusations against me when I came to the city towards the end of 2022 about a fraudulent lease issue since 2005 for the property I live on. He then somehow convinced the city attorney's office with those same accusations into filing a restraining order on his behalf for free, I'd assume, one which was denied for lack of evidence. The restraining order does actually mention how Mahik is possibly applying for it, behalf of other employees as well, but none are mentioned. I would have absolutely no problem, and I really do mean this, no problem with his poor lies, even his restraining order that was denied resulting in my favor, if it didn't lead to the third lawsuit for my family one day after. That is not the first time a law, I was, that's not the first time I was served with a lawsuit because of a city employee. I'm not making any specific accusations here, but would respectfully asking the city to once again look into this matter, because it is all being used against me in court. It doesn't matter if I don't have, it doesn't matter if I have a lawyer or not. I asked the words filed in court by the city attorney's office to be discussed, but was turned away. There's no shame in applying for something and having it denied. There's no resolution for me on his lies, so I made a police report about a possible felony charge under the penalty of perjury, and how that unfortunately has to do with the third lawsuit I was served in eight months. I was turned away again. Last time I said nine months, but I was wrong. It's actually three lawsuits I've been served in eight months and nine days. That is actually prohibited, prohibited according to chapter nine of the municipal code. I wouldn't be here today if the city and the appropriate departments did their jobs, and this is coming from a former employee of almost seven years. Please look into this matter.
Thank you. Obviously, I don't know anything about this issue, but I will ask for a offline briefing, so I can learn more about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, Herbert Milano.
Mayor Brotman, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. I want to bring up some comments that I brought in the past, but I'll start it with a, with a comment that is very common, at least in the circles that I'm in, and is that people tend to see the world from the steeple of their village church. And when I look at the problems that I generally face in Glendale, or the issues that I've become aware of, I see it from the point of view of a systems analyst. And my decades of work in dealing with providing information to organizations, organizations that oftentimes were over a billion dollars a year. And for many years, I have been promoting the idea that the city should collect information, analyze the information, create strategic plans, and work towards a strategic plan. And today was, in some of the issues that we had earlier, it's precisely the type of issues that would be much easier to solve if you had the data analyzed, collected, and evaluated, with a continual recurrence of an evaluation that takes place on an annual basis. Every time you get a software update, what you're really getting is the series of problems that have been corrected through experience. And, you know, at the local level, county level, state level, oftentimes ordinances are passed, and then they're just left to basically have an impact for a very long time, until the problems get to be so severe that you begin to have the protests, and the people complaining, and you get the impact of that. But if the ordinances and the laws that are being considered are evaluated, and the data collected, and updated, and adjusted to meet what the data is telling you, I would imagine that we would have a much easier time of running a city and living in a city. The data that I usually brought back in the past, that is really, really simple, has to do with road conditions. A road, on average, in the United States, has about a 20-year life. So if you take the 360 miles of roadway of London divided by 20, you have already an idea of how much you should be reconstructing on a yearly basis. Simple. And then you count basically how many miles of roads were actually reconstructed every year. The other issues that I find that need data collection, if the city were to collect it in a systematic way, and if the city council were to have some type of retreat, where you consider, where is it that we're going, where are we now, what did we accomplish, allows you to gauge the efficacy of the city manager, or the efficacy of the city attorney, the efficacy of the rest of the commissions that you have before you. It's an appeal for this, that I think that the problems that we generally face are solvable. They're not that insurmountable, especially when we have the data that is telling us, not anecdotes, not the impressions, not the hearsay, not the rumors, because we as humans are very faulty in regard to the way we think about issues. If we put somebody in a committee, and all they come to you are the impressions that they have from friends, the things that they can remember, we have a significant list of biases that prevent us from thinking clearly. And the one thing we can depend on is the data. If I tell someone, you know, the, the data tells us that if you smoke on a regular basis, or two packs a day, your chances of dying is X by the age of 60. But if he tells me, well, my grandmother lived into 102, and she was this two-pack smoker, and gives you an anecdote. And that's what carries the day. An anecdote carries a significant amount of weight when it comes to all kinds of decision-making. But then we have to rely on the data to basically set us straight. And that's what I'm asking the city council to do. Collect the data, analyze it, set policy on it, because when people come to you with their impressions, and their feelings, and their emotions, and what they can recall, and their hearsay, you may wind up creating bad policy. And that's really, really bad for all of us. I would appreciate that. Thanks. Thank you. Mike Barso.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm going to be talking, talking on the topic of housing. I believe I emailed all of you about a few weeks ago on this issue, but I'm just here to talk about it in person today. Some of these policies do need environmental review, some of them don't. Some have been instituted by cities like San Diego, or some cities in the East Coast. But this is just a rundown of our arena goals. We have still thousands more housing units to accomplish, to complete by the end of the decade. And at current pace, we're kind of decent, but we're not there yet. And we could also make extra money with new housing policies. So these are just some policy positions that you could advocate for to city staff or just research. So the first one is reducing or banning parking minimums. The second one is increasing the FAR, which is floor area ratio of construction, allow our greater lot size usage, allow greater discretionary density bonus units, rezone Glendale to allow TOD, transit-oriented development, specifically along transit corridors of bus lines with a frequency of 15 minutes or better, and around train stations, upzone Glendale corridors and regions to R1250 and R2250, which is medium to high density and just high density, and allow more mixed-use development on residential-only zones, and allow residential zones and commercial-only zones. So essentially, when cities implement these policies, you increase social cohesion and walkability, all that good stuff that we need to reduce our vehicle miles traveled, to reduce our emissions, but we also increase the housing stock, we cool the housing market, and we also create good money for the city. There's a lot of research on this. When we build transit-oriented development, when we build mixed-use development, when we build high with density, more people come into the city, they provide, businesses provide more services and vice versa. Sales tax goes up, more people spending money in the city is just good for everyone. And so if we want to get ahead of our arena goals, and even surpass them to be known as a city that passed its housing goals, with affordable housing especially, we could achieve that in the city of Glendale, because we're already kind of walkable. I don't own a car, I take the bus. Usually, I wish I could bike everywhere, I don't know how to bike yet. But when we build more housing on corridors, we promote things like walkability, and having more transit-oriented development, and having more businesses be on the first floor, so people can see their businesses and walk into the businesses rather than zooming past them 50 miles per hour. So those are just some options on how we can solve the housing crisis that we currently have. And I'll forward this email to you guys again, so you have like the list of policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, the email you sent, I did share it with Mr., with Mr. Calvert, and I did respond to you, right?
Yes, you and Paul Divine did. Thank you.
Okay, but I mean, the point is that we are thinking about all of these things.
And I think some of those things are already in the works. And Mike, you and I are going to learn how to ride a bike together.
Thank you.
I see a tandem bike in your future.
We're doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert.
Okay, Linda Newmeyer.
May your councilmembers, thank you. I'm here today just to remind you that a lot of the work that you are doing is just tacking around the edges of a problem. And the problem that we have in Glendale among the residents is that rents are too high, and that people believe, and that it's their right to treat tenants like little, little toys or dots to be moved around. In other words, if you look at the Grace, the Grace and Management Company that is in charge of the Onyx, you will see that they have raised the rents a lot this year, only up to the amount, of course, that they were legally able to do that. But they are forcing those tenants in the Onyx to move out, just like mom and pops in Glendale are forcing people to move out. It's, people want to stay in Glendale, they want to keep their home, and they can't. So that's an ongoing problem. Here, I do, I wanted to say thank you very much for working and considering the ad hoc tenant landlord committee. The idea of an ombudsman is a good one. I think we need a community liaison, who, somebody who can have boots on the ground, and really get out and be one with the people and, and help people. I know that, because those are some of the things that I do in the Glendale Tenants Union. I know, we spend hundreds of hours working with people, you know, getting every imaginable, imaginary thing you can think of that a tenant has to go through when they are being forced to move, or when they want to fight their move. They do call the city sometimes, sometimes they don't, sometimes they just call us, but they call the city, and a, and a phone call isn't going to get them where they need to be. So they need more than that. We know that. That's why we end up spending hundreds of hours working with them. One idea that I, that Mr. Milano had that I appreciate is that he said, you know, get the facts, whatever. But I say on top of that is go to the city agencies who are dealing with those people who are having hardships, and meet with them regularly, or have them report to you regularly. When I call the Armenian Relief Society, they tell me the same thing I'm telling them, rents are too high, our people are struggling, it's crazy. So this isn't new, this is, and you are not, this is not new to Glendale. Every community around the US is dealing with this. So I, this is going to stay on the burner, you're going to keep thinking about it, but hopefully, you know, we'll be able to make some progress. These little steps we're taking are important, but they're not the whole answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have somebody on the phone?
Yes, we have one caller.
I put a card in.
I didn't get, okay. Did you? I didn't get one. Not for oral communication, I didn't get one.
Yes, I'm not uploading right now.
Yeah, take the phone, yeah.
Our one caller is Nerces Tatin Sayan. Nerces, you're on air, you have three, five minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nerces Patincian, and I was calling, I was very concerned about the coyotes. There's a lot of like coyotes in and around the tenant village area, and then also I've noticed they're coming down almost all the way to Glen, Glen Oaks, like between Glenwood and Glen Oaks. And, you know, last night I was like walking someone through their car, and it was literally like right there, and then a couple of times this month, and then three or four times while walking at night. So it's, it's pretty concerning, and I don't understand like what the issue is. I've always seen coyotes, but I've never seen them in paths and all the way down to like almost where Glen Oaks is, like by Glen Oaks and Western, like almost all the way down to like that area. And also in the Allen area, like by between Glen, Glenwood and Allen, and Glen Oaks and Allen.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I think we're all seeing a sharp uptick in, in coyotes. It's a bigger question what we can do about it.
I bet he chased one yesterday at night.
Road runners.
Don't feed them.
And anvils.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Mayor Dan Brotman, at the June 6, 2023 council meeting, you charged, you changed a three-minute portion of oral communication on purpose, back to the end of council business, so you don't have to hear early in the evening your council critics. As a result, throughout the city, you are nicknamed the dictator of Glendale. In the old days, the liberal Democratic Party cherished freedom of speech, but today, you and your so-called progressive liberal Democrats throughout the nation do not cherish freedom of speech. You moved to Glendale about seven years ago, and you are turning Glendale upside down with your woke agenda. You are polarizing the city. Is it true, Mayor Dan Brotman, that you have two biological sons today are transgender women? Is it true that your former wife from China became a transgender man? Mayor Dan Brotman, you have been all over social media, and any criticism you receive, your three minions, Mike Allen, Bert Culver, and Kar Sergio, who has transgender children herself, are there to defend your woke ideas. Is it true, Mayor Brotman, that you are in communication with Queer Nation and other so-called progressive liberal organizations? Do not put in the same basket and assume that all gays and lesbians support the transgender drag queen agenda. Mayor Brotman, for the record, are you proud that the transgender drag queens have hijacked the gay and lesbian movement, setting it back 100 years? Are you proud? Mayor Dan Brotman, do you support transgender women competing in with biological women's, excuse me, in biological women's sports? Mayor Brotman, is it true you meet with the Glendale School Board officials at least once or twice a month? once or twice a month to discuss the transgender drag queen agenda? Mayor Dan Brotman, do you and your so-called progressive Liberal Democrats support the following assembly and state bills that want to reduce parental rights? State Senator Anthony Portatino, Senate Bill 596, silencing parental free speech. Assembly Bill 95 sender, 957, gender affirmation in child custody disputes. Assembly Bill 1078, state control over local school boards. Assembly Bill 5, training teachers to profile non-LGBTQ plus-affirming parents. The so-called progressive Liberal Democrats, state assemblywoman Laura Freeman and State Senator Anthony Portatino both support the transgender drag queen agendas. Council members, do you support transgender activist Mayor Dan Brotman and his agenda? It is clear the left hates the right more than they love America. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another card.
Mayor Brotman, members of the council, I had not planned to speak during oral communications, but I have to say, you know, we all know what's going on with the Glendale School Board and the Unified School District and all the political activism that's been stirred up and the emotions that have been stirred up, but I really don't like, you know, this is the city council, that's the school board. I really don't like to see the people, the activists who are protesting the school board's actions and decisions, I hate to see that creep into city council, city council meetings, city council members. I mean, I may be wrong, it just doesn't seem appropriate to me. It's two different bodies and I don't really care what the views of an individual council member are and to me, it's just, you know, it's not relevant to me. What I look for is their judgment and their decision-making ability. So this is just my reaction to what was said before. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next is new business?
Yes, new business. I believe that we do have two.
Yes, we, one. One. Yes. So I move that the city attorney being hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Helen Sedegy versus City of Glendale, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number 20STC v.34372, in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $75,000. The settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to the plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but is the compromise of a disputed claim.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Asadurian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Brotman?
Yes. And adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned at 9:32 P.M. Thank you.[1751.15]